Welcome, West Orange, to our May 12, 2020, virtual council meeting. Madam Clerk.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on October 31, 2019, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 7, 2019. Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Kokoviac?
Present.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney? Did I hear that?
No, I'm sorry, council member, you are muted.
Sorry, present, sorry.
Council President Castellino?
Present.
Mayor Parisi?
Present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and welcome back, West Orange, to another council meeting being done virtually. Lauren Grof Teases from the West Orange School District is monitoring our meeting, and when we get to the public comment part of the meeting, in the general meeting, not in the conference agenda, you'll be able to raise your hand in cyberspace there. She will see you and pat you into West for public comment. Dealing with this COVID-19 crisis has been very tough on our township. We've lost another 42 residents since we last met, or last met two weeks ago, to this horror virus, and I would like to, again, take a moment of silence for all those who we lost in the township, for their families, and for all those still who are sick and suffering from the virus. Thank you all. We're going to start off tonight with some information from our last few meetings. I think it's important, we all agreed to change our conference agenda around for this COVID-19 to make sure we get some great information out to our public. And so for all of you who are still struggling with unemployment, trying to obtain unemployment, please, Assemblyman John McCann, he is so thoughtful and helpful. His information is up on the screen, so if you're having any issues, please notify his office, his information is there. Also, for those of you who are in a small, have a small business, and you too had had trouble obtaining your loans and whatnot, that that help line is there as well. So, again, whatever we could do to help our residents, please reach out to us, even on our council emails. For those who still have questions about the virus and any information that you may want to seek, you could go to State of New Jersey COVID-19 Info, and there's their website there. And you could call toll-free the Medical COVID-19 Question Hotline at 800-962-1253. And you could also receive alerts, text message. So please utilize all our resources. And of course, nationally, if you have any questions about testing, we have Anthony Buglisi from the county coming in this evening to talk later on in public comment. He will have information for us tonight about the testing centers. But of course, please make sure that you call your physician. If you feel that you've been exposed and you feel the need that you want to get tested or have a question about testing, please make sure you call your physician as well. Thank you. And tonight, we have some guest speakers, which we appreciate these folks coming forward to share some important information with the public. I'm going to change things around a little bit to accommodate Stacy and Rob Reese. They are coordinators for the West Orange Farmers Market. And this year, the farmers market will be handled a little bit differently. So we're going to bring Stacy and Rob in. Do we have them here?
Yes, I'm here. Rob had to take care of Finn for a minute.
Okay. That's why we're going to put Stacy on first. She still has a little one, and there they are, our citizens of the year. Both of you monumental task last year, changing around our farmers market, and it was so successful. You really brought our community together all last year, from May to the fall. Mark, it was always buzzing, such creativity from you both with different themes each week. And it was such a great way to celebrate our commuting, to bring everybody together. And today, you're going to talk about how you're going to still have the farmers market, although we can't bring everybody together, but because you both are so creative, you found a way to do this. So I'll let you take over. You want to wait for Rob, or you're good?
No, I'll take it.
Okay.
See him running behind me is because he's... But yeah, I mean, last year was obviously our first year, and we hit it hard. We were doing events all the time. It seemed like every other weekend, we had something going, which was great because we were catching different people, different demographics. We would have kids one week, we would have a themed day for dogs the other, we had a chili cook-off, and we were just having a lot of fun. I mean, every week, there was new vendors, and there was new customers, and the community that we were building for the farmers market got bigger and stronger. And that's why we're excited this year to be back. However, the pandemic has certainly thrown a wrench in our plans, of course. So this year, we are going digital. So you can buy all of the products you know and love, if you've been to the farmers market before, at shop.wofarmersmarket.com. We've got bread, cheese, pickles, all the produce you love. I mean, if you name it, we probably have it. We have a vendor selling flour. That is one change that we have this year, or at least for now. We also have things like orange juice, whipped cream, a couple of your pantry staples that we wouldn't normally have at the farmers market. But because it is hard to get hands-on food, we decided that if we can offer it, we certainly will. So a couple of our vendors have things that you wouldn't normally find at our market, which is great. And we're looking at the orders now, and even a couple of minutes ago, people are ordering that kind of stuff. So if there's something you need and it's not on the website, please let us know. We're always happy to add more things to the site. For instance, we just had La French Dad add two of his items. We have country loaves and baguettes as of like half an hour ago. And we are planning on having meats and cheeses as well. And if you've been to the market, you know that we have a little bit of everything. And hopefully, this online ordering isn't permanent for the season, but we just don't know. So we're operating as if it might be, and that has been in the background making a mess.
And Stacy, you have quite a few West Orange residents as your vendors, correct?
Yeah, we do. So Piras Paletas makes basically gourmet ice pops made from fresh fruits. Last year, we had Truffula, who is a West Orange baker. We have Cancela Farms, which is new this year. They grow microgreens here in town. And really, I mean, all of our vendors are pretty hyper-local. We've got some from Montclair. I believe one's from East Orange as well. Everyone's within like a five to 10 border radius of West Orange. And what's really, really important to note here is that it's important to shop local and support these people because they need to pay bills just like you. And most of them, their only sense of income right now is from shopping at the farmers market or, you know, selling at the farmers market. So it's very important that if you need something like cheese or bread or pickles that can be ordered online, to go ahead and do that. And we also want to hit home that it is 100% contactless pickup. So after you place your online order through the website, you're going to wait until Saturday, just like normal. Saturday is our shopping day, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., and you're going to arrive in the car that you registered your account with on the website. So we're going to need the license plate and the model and color of your car, and that's how we identify who has just pulled up. And we'll say, okay, license plate XYZ, just pulled up, blue Honda. All the vendors are going to look through their notes, are going to say, okay, I have an order for that. What you're going to do is you're going to pop your trunk, which you're in the loading zone. We are going to be at 80 Main Street. So if you were at the farmers market last year, it's in the same spot, the same location, a little bit of a different setup because we're not doing tents and in-person sales. Everything's going online. So any orders placed before Thursday at 11:59 p.m., you can pick up that Saturday between 9:00 and 11:00. And we're even going a little bit further to make sure that not everybody arrives at 9:00 a.m. because that would be a very long line. So between 9:00 and 9:30, it's last name starting with like A through F, and so on and so forth, until we hit 11:00 a.m. It's important to come between those hours, and if you can't make it, please let us know. But if we don't hear from you and you don't show up, our vendors are going to donate any food that has been ordered, and there are no refunds. But it's going to be donated to charity, so it's going to a good cause, feeding some very hungry people. But if you can get there between 9:00 and 11:00 a.m. on Saturday, then go ahead and place an order. You can place more than one order as well. And the other thing that I want to mention is that we need volunteers. So it's not going to be setting up tables and trash cans and playing music and doing arts and crafts with kids, at least for now. We need volunteers that are going to answer phones for us. So we are going to have a phone system onsite where people call in. If there's a problem with their order, they're going to call us right there. Even though we're 10 feet away, we don't want them getting out of the car for any reason. They're going to pull into a lot. We need somebody to answer the phone and say, okay, blue Honda is missing an order, or they got the wrong pickles, or whatever it happens to be. So if you can answer a phone and just stand there, then we need you. And if you want to help us direct cars around the building and get into the loading zone, that's awesome, too. We're not going to be close to each other, we're going to be very far away. We just bought eight gallons of hand sanitizer for all of our vendors. All the vendors will be masked up, have gloves, the whole nine yards. So it's going to be completely risk-free as much as possible. So we're just going to make that clear, that it is going to be safe, and that's the reason we're doing this, is to keep, you know, as many people as safe as possible while still feeding them and supporting our local entrepreneurs.
And which driveway should they pull in? Mount Pleasant side or the Main Street side?
It doesn't matter. You can use both entrances and both exits. The way we've designed it is so that they're both open. If the line is long, it's going to start to wrap around the back of the building. But hopefully, it doesn't get that long. Our vendor is going to be moving quickly. And if the customers come at their designated times, then it shouldn't be long at all. Maybe 15 minutes tops.
And if somebody wants to help you, how do they get in touch with you? Do you have an email?
Yeah, we do. So we are accepting volunteers. You could go through our Facebook page. Hey, there it is, finally made it. You can go to West Orange Farmers Market on Facebook and just message our page and just say, hey, I'm available this Saturday, let me know if you need me. Or you could email info@wofarmersmarket.com, and that's our email address. And you can just introduce yourself, say, hey, I was at the market last year, or I'm completely new, but I'm able to help, and we can definitely use all the hands we can get.
Do you want to add anything? I talked a lot. Yeah.
And do you think you'll have this online presence after you're able to open up?
It's a good question.
Yeah, so we hope to keep this online platform and offering, you know, order online, pickup in the market going forward. You know, this is a bit of a proof of concept. It's proving whether or not this is even feasible. Thus far, it looks very feasible. So our hope is that the investment into this technology, the investment into this offering is ultimately going to be around for some time.
And folks could, after watching tonight, could go right online immediately to order some great items from the farmers market, correct?
Can you repeat that?
You could go online immediately tonight after you're watching us to order, put an order in. You don't have to wait. It's already open, the site, correct?
Yep, the site's open, ready, taking orders right now. We actually just added La French Dad. He's the very, very popular bread baker, who everybody loved his bread last year. He's now on the site, and his product is ready to order. He'll be adding more things tomorrow, but he does have his baguettes and his bread up. We are accepting orders right now at shop.wofarmersmarket.com. And the order cutoff, again, is 11:59 p.m. Thursday for Saturday's pickup. So it'll be the same pattern week after week. Get your order in by Thursday at 11:59 p.m., and just come to the parking lot, 80 Main Street, between 9:00 a.m. and 11:00 a.m., according to your last name, and your order will be ready for pickup.
Great. Well, thank you both. Again, you have been so creative in your thought with this concept, and just to see this up and running already, first week that you were supposed to open is always so impressive, but yet not a surprise, not a surprise. I just want to touch for a moment, before we let you go, we were supposed to do Restaurant Week last month, and we're hoping someday soon we can do it. But Stacy, you've been keeping a list for the township of all the open restaurants, and if you want to talk a little bit about our local restaurants for us?
Yeah, I mean, they're all doing amazing things. If they're open at this point, they've found their, the right way to do things. They got their groove, so to say. I mean, all the food's been delicious. And you know what? We've even had a couple businesses open with their grand opening in the pandemic. They've done extraordinary things. We have a new Indian Grill over on Harrison, and How Delish HD, which is a vegan bakery, highly delicious, highly recommended, that's over in the valley. So if you are looking for a new place to support, there's definitely new places to go and check out. And most of these places are actually doing delivery. They're all doing curbside pickup, but most of them are also doing delivery. And I also want to just note that Patsy's has a fantastic marketplace that you can order online. It's got clams and mussels, marinara sauce, some things that we don't have on the farmers market website. So if you need that kind of thing, go to patsys.com, I think it is. I could be wrong. Go to Patsy's website, wherever that is, and you'll see that there's a drop-down for Marketplace, and you can order all of your goods through that as well.
Thank you, Stacy and Rob. And I guess the message here is shop local.
Absolutely, 100%.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate you spending your time and energy on all these projects, and we look forward to the time where we could all meet you at our traditional setup. But for now, we'll just wait till you, when we come in to pick up our goods. So thank you very much for coming on this evening.
Thank you for having me.
Take care.
Thanks.
Hi. All right, great. Before I go to our next guest, which is from our school system, our superintendent, Dr. J. Scott Cascone, I want to talk a little bit about May is Mental Health Awareness Month. And through this crisis, it's very important that we look for signs with ourselves and family members. And these are, you know, it's been tough times here, not only in the township, but throughout the world. And it's a lot of pressure for many families, and we try to keep in good spirits and support one another. But we wanted to give you some information. So New Jersey Mental Health Association hotline is 877-294-4357. Seven days a week from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., there's phone counseling and referral. And of course, you know, right here, we have RJW Barnabas Health, and their 800 number is 800-300-0628. And they're available seven days a week, referrals, rapid assessment, and crisis intervention. Very, very important. And I'm going to let our superintendent, Dr. Cascone, thank you so much, Dr. Cascone, for coming on to talk about what our students could do. With this crisis staying, you know, secret, our students are home for the rest of the school year. Our hearts all go out to our senior students who will be graduating. And Dr. Cascone is going to talk a little bit about, one, some support systems for our students and what they've been doing at the school district regards to e-learning and how graduation will be handled. Dr. Cascone, thank you for coming on. Oh, do we have you?
Dr. Stacy, you just need to unmute yourself.
Got it.
There you go.
Thank you, President Castellino, members of the council, Mayor Parisi. Certainly appreciate the opportunity to come on tonight and speak about the work that's happening in the school district. Obviously, you know, you understand as the civil servants of the town government, you know, the many challenges, you know, that we're facing on a daily basis. But I'm sure you share the sentiment that it's gratifying work to know that, you know, our time and efforts are helping our citizens to get through this the best we can. I want to thank, you know, the town government, local law enforcement, OEM, who, through, you know, key points in time over the last number of weeks, have been really helpful. It makes it a lot easier to manage a crisis like this, knowing that we have folks in the town government with whom we can work and who are just cooperative, good folks. And so we appreciate all the help you've given to the school district, you know, when we haven't been able to get things done ourselves. And we look forward to that ongoing partnership. So a couple of key orders have come down from Trenton and the NJ DOE in the last week or so. One of them was obviously the order which closed schools for the remainder through June 30. And a more recent one that came down on Friday evening was governor's order, which was also reinforced by an order from the state OEM, Office of Emergency Management, which basically prohibits in-person graduation ceremonies as well as, what I understand, is like, you know, drive-bys and parades and things of that nature. You know, obviously, our graduation, you know, is scheduled for the end of June. And I do think that there's an importance to, statutorily speaking, bringing closure to the student's high school career. In other words, actually conferring upon them their high school degree until the superintendent, which typically happens in an in-person ceremony, you know, confirms the graduates for, you know, for graduation. Technically, they haven't graduated from high school. And obviously, we know that we can't do that in person. So we are going to move forward for the end of June in doing a virtual ceremony. But we are looking at a few other additional things that we can do because we understand that a virtual ceremony, while maybe fulfilling the statutory obligation and providing some recognition is not exactly what folks, both seniors and their parents, would hope for. And so we are working, I am working right now with the high school administration to plan an opportunity whereby students and their families would be able to come to the school after the graduate, not on the day of graduation, but the week after graduation, not only for the practical purpose of kind of bringing in things, school property, and collecting personal effects, and I'll talk a little bit more of that later, but also an opportunity to come in their cap and gown, to have a picture with the principal. I would be there to greet them, congratulate them. You know, we would have a backdrop, something of that nature, where the parents could take, guardians could take a picture with their son or daughter to recognize that occasion. Obviously, as far as the staff goes, we would be maintaining social distance from the graduates, from the parents. But obviously, they would not have to maintain social distance from each other to have that opportunity. We have not ruled out a late July in-person event, working with high school administration to identify a date which makes sense. We'd like to get that date on the calendar sooner rather than later so that people can plan for that. But again, there's no guarantee that the restriction guidelines will be any different in late July. But it gives us a point down the road where we can look forward to and hopefully do something. One final piece, which we're also kind of just starting to knock around a little bit, as we've heard it mentioned in some other districts, is the possibility of doing some form of a class of 2020 banquet or reunion party, if you will, over Thanksgiving weekend. And obviously, that's in the very beginning and preliminary stages. We'd be looking to work collaboratively with our PTA and perhaps our project graduation folks to be part of the planning of that effort. But those are some of the ideas that we have presently as it relates to graduation. And I understand there may be some questions there, but we'll kind of, we can circle back to that at the end if you'd like. Obviously, we're doing everything we can to try and keep our seniors in good spirits, from, you know, banners in town to lawn signs, to just amazing recognitions and shout-outs, if you will, on social media and videos. Doing our award ceremonies, our various academic and athletic award ceremonies virtually so we can continue to recognize those athletes and artists, academics, what have you. And we continue to try and keep their spirits up as much as possible during this time. Obviously, when the governor closed school for the remainder of the year, this brought some things into clear focus. Whereas prior to that, we were kind of trying to plan for two parallel paths. One, which was, what are we going to do in virtual learning for the remainder of the year? And one was, what happens if we're asked to come back in May? We no longer really had to ponder and try and plan for what that would look like to bring students back in May, which, to be honest with you, was a relief because it was hard to imagine how we would really be able to do that. And so our focus has really been placed squarely on how can we make the experience now for the remainder of the year as high-quality experience? How can we ensure that our students are progressing academically as much as possible? And how are we giving individualized support and attention to students as much as possible? To that end, we're really starting to ramp up on our use of interactive video conferencing formats for instruction with Google Meets. That's going to become more prevalent next week. And we're really keeping a critical eye on grading and assessment to ensure, while we did not go to pass/fail in grade six through 12, and as such, that brings an additional layer of accountability, not only to the students, but it also brings an additional layer of accountability to the school district to ensure that we are, you know, that we're supporting kids, right? That if we're going to hold them accountable to grades, we need to hold ourselves accountable to providing them the support that's necessary for them to achieve and perform at least at the same level as they would have if they were in schools. You know, I could go into some more detail about that and just piggybacking on President Castellino's statement about Mental Health Awareness Month. You know, we have some fantastic, you know, resources on our staff with two outstanding high school student assistance counselors, as well as middle school assistant counselors. Our guidance department, under the direction of Cheryl Butler, the Director of Student Counseling Services, has been outstanding. She keeps me in the loop on a regular basis. And our guidance counselors have been amazing in really conducting individualized outreach and meeting at times virtually with folks if that's needed. So they've been a huge, huge part of the success of what we've been able to do. Obviously, you know, ensuring that people are, you know, food insecure families are taken care of. I know the town's been doing an amazing job with that through the Mayor's Sunshine Fund, through the Holy Trinity Food Pantry. It's just Cynthia Cummings and those folks there, really just, you know, unbelievable efforts, the local law enforcement in helping with the pickup of goods. And we kind of, we've gotten into the food pantry routine here. It kind of just evolved here at the board office, but you know, we said, you know what? Hey, let's see what we can do here. And we've had outstanding support from Life Christian Church, from our Junior Air Force RTC, and just families that have donated goods. So we've really been able to be a nice annex, if you will, to the town pantry and have food going, coming in and going out on a regular basis. We deliver it if necessary, and I think it's been a great resource. Of course, Mashes is delivering 8,000 meals daily, I'm sorry, weekly. And we are presently looking at expanding our offerings to families, in particular on Fridays, to include non-prepared goods like pasta and rice and things of that nature, to, you know, to give them some additional foodstuffs over the weekend because we know that that's probably a more challenging time, not getting the daily meals through the school. One of the, so a couple of big planning pieces right now are that we really start to squarely focus on, or how are we going to get school property back, in particular from our seniors? And how are we going to do for our students who are transitioning from different schools, fifth grade, sixth grade? fifth grade, sixth grade, eighth grade, when they're moving to a new building? We're not as concerned about students who are staying in the same school. We recognize that if we are to open up regularly next year, we might need a day or so of kind of a reset where we kind of, we shuffle materials around and things of that nature. But we are planning right now on a process for how we're going to make that happen and are looking forward to putting out dates soon to parents so they know when those dates will be. And obviously, they will be done with safe social distancing protocol, you know, personal protective equipment, and really having a limited number of students and parents coming to our facilities at any given time. But we are presently finalizing those plans. And finally, as we look forward to next year, the reality of it is, and I don't make any bones about it, that I haven't spent, I don't spend a whole lot of time now really thinking too deeply about September because there's enough really to think about and plan for right now. The reality of it is, is that the data we have, you know, doesn't allow us to really plan for September. And yes, are we, is our Buildings and Grounds Department in? And have they, have they developed a summer cleaning protocol and plan? Absolutely. So we're doing that. And anything we can plan for in the short term, we are. But we need a few more weeks to determine if we have any more indication of how this thing's going to play out in September. And we are starting to think in really mile-high view of that, but not anything too indepthly. We have something more pressing on our hands, which is summer school and summer programs. We don't have guidance yet from the state, though I am expecting that it will be coming soon regarding the permissibility of doing onsite summer school. If we're not able to do that, we are prepared with virtual offerings for kids, and we'll continue to do that. Final piece is relative to finances. And I know this is, in the public sector, this is a world you know very well. And obviously, we face similar challenges in public schools. I should note, one positive is that we did receive a definitive number from the state in what we would get in additional aid under the COVID CARES Act, which would fall under the auspices of Title I. And that'll be in about, in the sum of approximately $750,000, which is obviously great news and can certainly help offset any other losses we may incur, which we may very well incur. And while we don't have any definitive numbers from the state, it's certainly not out of the realm of possibility that we will lose some of the state aid which we had originally been promised. Whether it's just the additional aid we got this year in the 2.5 million or they actually cut a percentage into what we had previously, it's likely that that will happen. As you know, we passed a budget. The state doesn't finalize their budget until late August. Their fiscal year ends September 30th. So the possibility that we could have to make additional cuts between now and the actual opening of the school year, but after the opening of the fiscal year, is a possibility. And so I feel that's worth mentioning. And obviously, if we have to make those cuts, we'll attempt to do so with as little impact on students as possible. Above and beyond that, I just have to, I have to really acknowledge just the amazing efforts of the employees of the West Orange Public School System on all levels, from food service workers to teachers to administrators. The effort that's been put in has been tremendous. And I have to commend our community, our parents, our students. We've done very well. And it has everything to do with the collective efforts, the individual efforts of the people of this community. Obviously, I'm relatively new to the community, but I tell you, I was happy to land here. And, you know, I couldn't be any happier now, seeing the metal and the substance of this community has only further strengthened my commitment to hopefully be here for a long, long time, leading the school district. So I appreciate the time, and if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Dr. Kascón. I have to say, being a former school board member myself for 10 years and working with four superintendents, I can't remember in that 10-year span of ever a crisis to have to navigate. And this being your first year with us, I, from my heart, I can't thank you enough. Your, well, starts at the top, as we always know, and you have been a pillar of strength and total, always optimistic for our community, for our students. And it really just shows, jumping in with the food pantry and getting our kids fed. And it seems like you thought of everything. I can't even think of a question to ask you because you, you know, you cover what's looking forward with a lot of question marks. And I really appreciate, I really like the idea of having something for the seniors down the road. I think that is awesome because they need closure. So that is, that's really wonderful. But I, just real quick, because we're going to let you go, but I'll let my colleagues, if they have anything they want to say or a question for you, starting with Councilman Garino.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Dr. Kascón, you've just been a real breath of fresh air to the township, to community, our students. And you make West Orange the township that we are. And your accessibility, your, you know, you don't walk around like you're a loop. You're not. You're so approachable. And I hear from many parents, from many people, and I just thank you personally and on behalf of a lot of people for keeping us going and for the great feeling and the great effort you do for our students. That's why our students go on to such great and wonderful things. So thank you, Dr. Kascón, Board of Ed, and the entire faculty and administration of the West Orange Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Krokoviac.
Doctor, sounds like you're doing a terrific job. You've got a good group over there, and I appreciate it, and best wishes for continued success.
Thanks, sir.
Councilwoman Matu Brown.
Dr. Kascón, we spoke earlier this week and just have to, you know, echo my sentiments expressed to you for coming in your first year with us and doing such a magnificent job. It looks like you're already a pro at what you do. Your staff certainly appreciates you for it, and we appreciate you for it. If you had one thing to say for those parents who are ready to just give it all up, you know, coming so close to the end of the school year and all the frustrations that I'm sure you understand, what would you say to them?
Yeah, well, I mean, I think, I think the tough thing about answering that question, Matu Brown, is that there's such a continuum, such a wide spectrum of experiences out there for parents, right? And so, and so the message, you know, would be, would be different, you know, depending upon, you know, we have some families that are wrestling with some really critical, in some cases even life-threatening needs, right? And, you know, and we have other families who are, you know, are healthy, are well-resourced, you know, are together, right? And so, but I think regardless of where a family, you know, resides on that continuum, I think it's, you know, finding a source of inner strength, right? And whatever that may be for you. And it's different for everyone, but dig deep and find that source of inner strength and a way to, you know, to kind of, to pick yourself up and keep going and an inspiration to keep going. You know, that our children are, our children are watching us. You know, they're following our lead, they're following our example. And to me, whether it's my own children or the children of this school district, to me, that is, that is a tremendously inspiring influence for me, that helps me stay motivated and stay positive, is that fact. And so I think that's a commonality regardless of what one's circumstances is as a parent.
I think, I think that certainly goes to show just how in touch and in tune you are with our students and our families. And thank you for being with us and for all that you're doing.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCartney.
Thank you, Council President. Dr. Kascón, to mine is a note of thanks as well. I was pleased when you first came to the district. You attended so many events. We, you know, we saw you all over. You have a social media presence. You made yourself familiar and accessible to the community, and then you walked right into this. The fact that you met so many people in town, I think, gave you an inkling of what the community is about. And listening to you and the mayor on Facebook Live the other night, and I didn't get a chance to say this to Stacy and Rob, but even on their Facebook Live yesterday for the small business segment, I just felt proud and grateful. And even the responses that they were saying is that, how they see the community sticking together. Stacy had used the term bigger and stronger. And just all of these community-minded events and activities that you're putting together and thinking about, which is most important, just actually thinking about what needs to get done and working to implement them. Feel very proud and grateful. Continued success.
I miss the events.
So do I.
So do I. Thank you, Councilwoman. You know, and kudos to your staff. Just watching the videos have been so heartwarming and inspirational for all your students. So I'm sure the kids appreciate their teachers and administrators come dancing on all these videos and trying to cheer them up. And it just goes, you know, to show, you know, we are West Orange. And you just fit, you know, right, they will just fit right in with our community, with our bonding together, working with the township and the school district. So again, thank you so much and to your staff. And we wish you continued success as we move forward with this crisis. So I appreciate you coming on, Dr. Kascón. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Council President Castellino, thank you. Thank you to the Town Council, Mayor Parisi. Appreciate it and look forward to seeing you out there sooner rather than later.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Have a good night now.
Sounds good.
You too. And next we have on our mayor, our mayor, Robert Parisi. Mayor, can you hear us?
Yes, Council President.
Thank you so much for coming on this evening. We've been watching your daily reports. We appreciate all that the township staff has been doing. And we were hoping tonight we'd have a re-entry plan, but unfortunately, we're almost, we're just not there yet. So we appreciate any information that you have for us this evening in regards to this crisis. And I know daily watching the numbers has been tough for all of us, especially for you there navigating our township, so whatever.
Great. Thank you, Council President. I just want to take a couple of minutes real quick just to, I know Dr. Kascón left, but I just want to offer my sentiments, similar to the council, of how fortunate we are to have him. Though we all know that local government presents a lot of challenges on a daily basis. I'm not sure, without taking anything away from all of the jobs we do every day, I don't know that they necessarily equal the challenges it is to educate people in today's modern world, especially in a community as diverse as ours. And I think, given who we are and given the challenges that have been dumped upon us, I think we're all pretty fortunate to have Dr. Kascón here. He's really lived up to and maybe exceeded expectations and has really handled this crisis with class and with optimism and made us all proud of our schools and certainly of the leadership that he's provided. So they don't, they don't teach you how to prepare for things like this, but I think Dr. Kascón and his staff has stepped up and it's been a pleasure to watch. And I think we're all pretty comfortable at the bright future our district has under his leadership. So now to local government. Just to maybe mirror what Dr. Kascón had started with, I want to thank our staff. And I don't know that there's really any good way or appropriate way to thank all the people who are doing so much on a daily basis and way more than I think the public is ever going to have any clear indication as to just how much they've done. So certainly, we all know that police and fire, whether it's in the academy training, whether it's the variety of drills and training they do during the course of their careers, there is some preparation for these type of things. But when you, when you look at the health department and the nurses clinic and even our senior services, they can never imagine this type of scenario. And so many people, and we'll have a way, an appropriate way of recognizing them when the time is right, but so many people have stepped up and really, really gone way beyond what any one of us as elected officials would have ever expected of them. There are, there are people in our nurses clinic and the health department, and of course, Nikki Alagreño, the OEM office, under his direction. I mean, they're working around the clock every day, seven days a week. I know they're not looking for praise, but, and again, as I mentioned, there's going to come a time when we're going to do what we can to properly acknowledge them. But we should all be grateful that our first responders, the OEM office, the DPW is even still out there. They're out there every day doing what they have to. And in double shifting, sometimes they're cleaning township facilities almost on a daily basis every time someone's in there. So the health department, the nurses, senior services, I mean, a lot of people are really stepping up to serve this community. And in many ways, as I mentioned, that the community will never completely understand. But the elected officials, our township council, you should know that a lot of people are doing a lot to keep the nearly 50,000 people in this community informed and safe. And even beyond employees, we don't always recognize them. But as you all know, we have a cert team, completely volunteers. And they have really stepped up too, to contribute wherever they can, whether it's delivering food or doing whatever's necessary to keep in touch with our residents and to serve them as well. So there will come a time, as I mentioned, that we're going to have an opportunity to publicly thank people. But you all should know, in the public watching, that a lot of people who work for this town have really stepped up and made us all proud, and we're all grateful for that. And I think even beyond that, you got to thank the community. This is a very stressful situation, whether it's the economic stress, whether it's the mental stress of being cooped up in your house, whether it's the struggles of trying to e-learn, e-teach your children on a daily basis. That's not something maybe parents prepared for either. But I think our community has come together. They've been responsive to each other's needs. And even maybe beyond that a little bit, you see so many stories on the news of communities where maybe people aren't paying attention as much as they should be. Our community has paid attention. There's been very few instances where the members of our public aren't doing what they're supposed to do, aren't doing what's been recommended to them and being respectful of their neighbors, whether it's at stores or whether it's in public property. I think everyone in very stressful circumstances, in a situation where none of us could have ever prepared for, everyone's contributing. And I think that, if there's any solace in all this, I think that's something that we should, we should find comforting. But then, of course, that takes us to the numbers. And Council President mentioned, it's painful every day to look at these numbers, despite all the wonderful stories that are coming out of this and all the wonderful stories that come out of any crisis. Fact is, 144 of our neighbors have died in the last six weeks as a result of this. And that is, that's tragic. I don't know. There's been a situation in any of our lives since World War II where every American can literally say they know of someone who's been affected by this. I don't know that there's been a situation that has hit our country like this since World War II. Every one of us knows someone who's passed. Every one of us knows someone who knows someone who's passed. It's been universal, and it's sad. But the fact is, 144 of our residents have passed, and that's horrible. There was three additional deaths we reported today in addition to the 11 new cases. That is, brings the total intake of COVID-19 positive cases to a little over 1,100. 1,140 people have come through our OEM office that our nurses clinic is dealing with. 53 of those cases were eventually, after investigation, after the contact tracing takes place, we find out they're actually from other municipalities. So some have been moved out. And the good news is that 356 of these 1,140 people have now recovered. So if you look at the daily updates, the numbers of recovering people is growing exponentially every day. That's, that's a great thing. And about a week ago, the number of negative tests surpassed the number of active tests. So although there's still restrictions, I should say, maybe not restrictions, but limitations to those who can actually be tested, a lot of people are getting tested. And fortunately, even those that are showing signs, we now have 1,373 West Orange residents that have tested negative despite showing signs. So that's obviously encouraging. And obviously, if you follow the numbers, although we did have 11 new-- And obviously if you follow the numbers, although we did have 11 new cases today, they, they've obviously been decreasing. You don't have to look too far in the internet or, or the evening news to see that numbers are decreasing. And they're equally decreasing in our town. In terms of hitting close to home, obviously our town employees have not been immune to this either. So three of our police officers tested positive, seven of our firefighters, two members of the health department tested positive and a member of the DPW have tested positive. Fortunately, they, some have fully recovered and those that haven't yet are doing okay. So, so that's a good thing. Obviously there's been a lot of attention in town, whether it's social media or just in general discussions of the impact that the variety of senior assisted living, long-term care facilities here in town, we, we might take it for granted because we drive by them all so often. But West Orange, in addition to the four residential communities we have, we have 11 other facilities. It's 15 total, although we are only about seven to eight percent of the population of the county. We have over 20% of the number of senior and assisted living facilities in the county. So that is a disproportionate number and obviously that's been a big impact. A number of our deaths unfortunately are related to these variety of the senior buildings. So of the 144 deaths that we report as of today, 93 of them emanate from one of the, one of the senior buildings and, and only 51 are from private residences. Interesting, the number of actually confirmed cases is in the reverse. So of the confirmed cases, only 23% of that 1,140 cases actually come from senior assisted living facilities where 77% of them are coming from private residences. So what that tells you is what we were warned as a nation several months ago about who is the most vulnerable to succumb to this virus. It's the senior population, especially those with underlying issues. So again, so only 23% of the confirmed cases come from senior facilities. The number of deaths that come from those facilities is, you know, is significantly higher than, you know, 60%. So the fact that we have a number of these facilities is a blessing. We have a large senior citizen population in our community. Unfortunately, given the circumstances surrounding this virus and those being most susceptible to it, we've taken a big hit in there. So we're doing all we can to work with these centers through our, our health office, through our OEM office, county and state officials are also working closely with them and we're going to continue to. But, but again, as of today, tragically, we have 144 of our, of our neighbors have, have passed in a very short time. And that is really tough to, tough to look at every day. As we all know from news reports and from the, from the experts, the way that, the way out of this is testing. County, Lucy might talk about that a little bit later. They've entered into a number of agreements and have operated some testing centers already. We are about to open one here in West Orange. It's not open by the township. Obviously we've been working closely with a local doctor who approached the town. We have an agreement with the executive drive site. There's still not a confirmed opening yet, but that center hopes to, we hope to have it open soon. It will be unlike, not unlike every other center, you're going to need to, you need a referral. There's just not enough availability of testing yet to test anyone who wants it yet. But there will be a website and a link to connect with a doctor via telemedicine to review the symptoms and, and hopefully get people a referral. So when that is, more information about that is available, we'll obviously communicate that to the council and to the public as well. And we'll hope to test as many local people as possible. The Mayor Sunshine Fund, as you, as you see on the screen, this is, this is something that's been around for decades. Did not start with this mayor, did not start with the last mayor. It's been used over the years to help local people need maybe some temporary relief. If people were displaced by fire, we would help them through the Mayor Sunshine Fund. We would help people, a number of families were just relocated because of the hurricane several years ago. So we would use the Mayor Sunshine Fund, but it's taken on a whole new meaning these last several weeks. It is, it is helping to feed people on a daily basis. People in our community have, are struggling financially in ways they've never had before and the Mayor Sunshine Fund is helping. So we do have a link set up on the website where people can make donations. It is tax deductible to make a donation to the Mayor Sunshine Fund. We have raised a little over, raised about 30,000 since March 1st.
Nice.
A lot of that is going out on a daily basis. And that does not include the 17,000 that has been raised from the We Are West Orange Stronger Together shirt, t-shirt and sweatshirt program. There they are.
They're their model.
This was, this is really a blessing and maybe goes back to some of the things Dr. Kascón mentioned or some of the council members even mentioned or, or what I mentioned, just a, a community coming together. So this was entirely the head football coach of the high school, Coach Grant's idea to come up with a way to raise money for the Mayor Sunshine Fund. Assistant Coach Andrew Mazerick, we all know Andrew, a lot of us know Andrew who are up here in town, very artistic. He designed them and Perry, who we all know Perry, our social media coordinator and obviously a prominent member of the community, he's been working on, on putting it all together and getting it out there in the community. And all because Coach Grant had an idea and Andrew hit it out of the park and Perry ran with it. We raised over $17,000 for the Mayor Sunshine Fund just from this effort besides great t-shirts and a way to show community support. That's another 17,000. So combined, we have close to $50,000 in the Mayor Sunshine Fund or close to 50,000 that has been raised. Obviously a lot of it has gone out and we suspect a lot of it's going to continue to go out over these coming weeks. So if, if anyone wants to donate, it's going to go to a really important cause and, and a really local cause. This is literally going to help people who live on your street, live around the corner, maybe even in families you know. It's going to, it's going to go to help them on a daily basis. So we hope that people will take, take the opportunity to check out the website, make a donation. Or if you want to help the cause at the same time and get a great t-shirt or sweatshirt, that link is also available on the township website and they come in a variety of colors and a variety of designs as well. So that's one good thing that has come out of all this. The community has stepped up and is helping their fellow residents and fellow neighbors through this. So where do we go from here? Council President, you mentioned when you and I first spoke two weeks ago about being at this meeting, we really thought we were going to have a clear timeline as to what next steps are. And the fact is, we don't. The only thing I can tell you definitively as of tonight is, is that we did cancel the annual Memorial Day ceremony. That's just not going to be feasible. Three, four weeks ago, we really thought that maybe by Memorial Day we would be able to, but it's just not going to be possible. Pool is obviously not going to be open for Memorial Day weekend either, which is usually the opening weekend. And we don't know when it's going to be open. We believe it is going to be open. We're just not really sure when it is, whether it's July or whether it's literally August or maybe as we've learned these last several months, maybe we actually find out that we can't. But we are preparing to open it. And obviously when we get, if we get a date to open the pool, that fee schedule, the early bird special and all the fees that are associated with that, that'll be restructured based on.
We lost you there.
That is yet, because just like so many other things in our, are you still there?
Yes, we just need to back up. You're like your last two sentences. We lost you in the little blip there.
Okay. So my last two sentences were about the pool, the, the fee structure, whether it's the early bird special or the half summer or all the weekend or all the other great things we offer for our pool, that will be readjusted when we actually have an opening, if we have an opening for the pool. But we are moving forward as if we're going to open the pool. Fourth of July fireworks is another thing, obviously. Other than the parade and the street fair, probably one of the events during the course of the year that gets three to 4,000 people in a very tight situation. So when we're all trying to social distance, it's probably a little unrealistic to think that the Fourth of July fireworks are going to go on as planned. So we're looking at a couple of different ways to, to look at that. Again, it's nothing definitive at this point. Some communities have moved it to September. So we're, we're exploring the option of maybe having Fourth of July fireworks celebrated on Labor Day, maybe to, to kick off what will hopefully be a new beginning for, for our community. We're also considering the idea of, of the, the 140 acres that this township bought about a year ago. You can fit a lot of people on 140 acres safely social distance from each other. So we're exploring the idea of using Rock Spring Golf Course as a potential place to do the fireworks. So it's all just experimental at this point. We just don't know. We're pretty sure and thinking that the Fourth of July fireworks are not going to go off as normal at the high school. It's just too tight quarters to have that many people. So again, though, nothing definitive. And that goes along with all the recreation programs. We just don't know any idea yet as to what can take place this summer. We do know as, we've been lucky, the parks are open. Obviously people have to continue to social distance while they're there and we're not allowing organized sports. So we have had a few cases where kids are getting antsy, I guess, over this last six, seven weeks. They've, they hit the park with, with soccer balls and balls and basketball courts. So we're not, we're not allowing that at this point. We're not allowing tennis, basketball or soccer for a lot of reasons, but among them is that it's, it's the same ball. So even if you can social distance during some sports, you're, you're, you're all using the same ball and that could certainly be carrier. So though I know a lot of people have expressed frustration that we haven't opened some of these things yet, we think it's in everyone's best interest to, to continue to put them off, especially when you look at the numbers that our community has been hit with. So I know the weather's getting nice and people get antsy.
Yeah.
But we think it is prudent and best in everyone's interest to, to continue to allow people to use our parks, but not in organized athletic events. And of course that brings us back then to another wonderful facility that we all look forward to every summer is, is the programming at OSbac. Unfortunately, that's all still up in the air as well. So the organizers of OSbac are exploring different options as well. And as, as information gets confirmed, as the state maybe issues new orders that lift some of these restrictions, as we finalize decisions, obviously the information will be communicated with the council and with the public. As I mentioned, the one thing that was allowed open as of May 2nd was golf. And so we've opened up Rock Spring. The organizers of Rock Spring had cut their staff significantly during the downtime, but we're maintaining the course. So the state gave us about a day and a half notice to open and they were ready to go. As soon as the, the website was open, they, they booked that first weekend solid. We are, as you may or may not know, we're not allowed to have foursomes, only twosomes go out at the same time. And they require to have the, the golf be further apart than you would normally have to guarantee social distancing. So that basically means we're only able to operate at about 33% of the course's capacity because you can only do two golfers as opposed to four and the length of time between rounds has to be further apart. But that said, we have done 750 rounds of golf since, since opened only, only a weekend ago. Just as a statistic out of curiosity, 67 of those 750 rounds have been West Orange residents. And although it's less than capacity, we're 90% booked already through the website for the next 10 days. So people were anxious to get out and play and golfers are, as you all know, especially Council President, golfers are dedicated. So as soon as the word goes, people logged on. So although we're not.
We lost you there.
As we would like to and we hope to soon. You have me?
I got you back now.
Okay. So, so, okay. I, I look, I know Dr. Kascón mentioned it. I'm sure John and Jack are going to talk to you about it later. As bad as this crisis has been on, on human life and on all of us emotionally, there's going to be a financial tsunami that's going to follow all this. It's not just for West Orange. It's going to be for every town in the state and every state in the country. And John could talk more about it later, but we're already having cash flow problems. Those cash flow problems are going to grow exponentially. And given this economic stress that this has put a lot of families in, I think, you know, we could all probably plan on a very difficult budget situation over these next 18 months, if not longer, and the very real possibility that very difficult decisions are going to have to, have to be made by all of us because state doesn't have the money to bail us out. And unless the government at the federal level is going to print more money, they're not going to have the money to bail out the states either. So as you can imagine, our cash flow has been stressed because we put off the payment of the sewer bill and because many people aren't able to pay the taxes and the tax bill has been put off on top of that. You can imagine all this time the state is not collecting sales tax and they're going to have a very difficult time meeting the income tax projections, which are the two major contributors to the state budget. So Dr. Kascón mentioned, he can't be sure he's going to get all the aid he was promised. We're not 100% sure we're going to get all the money we count on from the state, let alone getting extra money from the state. So we all want to be safe. We want our families to be safe. We want our neighbors to be safe. We want to get through this and get, and minimize any further impact this virus has on our community as quickly as possible. But when, when the, when the light's green and everyone hits go and hits the street 100 miles an hour back to normal life, we're, we're going to be left with some economic situations here that are going to make for some very difficult decisions over these next several months. So not to end on a down note, I'll just add one more thing as, as a quick plug. Hopefully all of the council members have completed the census information. We all have plenty of time on our hands over these last six weeks. So there's really no, no excuse why the public hasn't filled out the census survey yet. But we're not, we're not quite where we need to be yet as a community. So continue to remind your friends and neighbors to complete the census information. It's going to be even more critical as we look at these next couple of years and the financial struggles we're going to be having to have representation and the proper representation in Washington to be fighting for us. If you don't already know, New Jersey lost a congressional seat last census. And it, given our population, we hopefully to get that back. So really important for each one of us to complete our census. You know, everyone in America likes to say, my vote doesn't make a difference, but, but in completing the census, it really does. And all of us should be reminded and remind everyone we know to fill out the census. So that's it, Council President. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. We're not out of the, out of this yet. West Orange as a community has been hit hard. But I think there's a lot of reason to be proud of this community and proud of the people who work for the community. And a lot of things have been done, a lot of people doing important things to, to help each other. And I don't know that anything more we could ask for than to see our neighbors and, and friends doing what they can to help, help their fellow neighbors.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I know my council colleagues probably have a few questions for you. If you don't mind a few more minutes with us.
Sure.
Councilman Garino, any questions or statements for the mayor?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Mayor, thank you for being such a great leader for our community and keeping us calm and keeping our feet to the ground, but also letting people know the true forecast of what is around the corner. So thank you for that. I've had, I have one question. I have a number of residents have been emailing and calling. They want to know, and you mentioned about recreation, when will the tennis courts be open? So that's, that's a question.
So it's, it's interesting. I, I've heard from more people about tennis in the last week or two than I think I've heard of in, in my entire tenure as mayor. In fact, as you know, we've eliminated some tennis courts in town, but apparently there is still a lot of interest and that's. See, as you know, we've invested money over this last year to redo a lot of our tennis courts. So it is good to see the interest. Unfortunately, and they continue to be frustrated with our answer, but we're not prepared to allow that. So what's an interesting kind of conflict among levels of government. The state, under one of the recent executive orders, is still restricting the use of tennis in private tennis clubs, never addresses public tennis courts. So that puts us in a position where we could open our public courts, even though the state law, the state executive order requires that private clubs be closed. We don't want to be in a position where we conflict with what the state says. But in addition to that, as I mentioned earlier, we're still restricting and, and limiting the ability for kids or adults to play basketball or soccer. And we were including tennis in that mainly because again, in most cases you're using the same ball. And although you might be socially distanced as people, if you're both touching the same ball, we don't know how that can be and follow the recommendations of, of all the health officials. So I know people want to play tennis. I get that. And we think we're close. But we think we need to be a little bit more cautious for at least until the state lifts some of these executive orders that currently already restrict the use of tennis and the play of tennis in private tennis clubs. So I know some people aren't happy with me, but in talking with all the staff and talking with the OEM and health officials, we believe that it's still necessary to restrict the use of tennis, the play of tennis.
Thank you. I have one last question, Mayor. Maybe it'll be directed towards Mr. Sayers, Mr. Garino. Thank you. I have one last question, Mayor. Maybe it'll be directed towards Mr. Sayers, Mr. Gross. But another resident is asking about street improvements. And yes, even though we've had projects approved and funding, but we don't know how the funding is going to be. What do you anticipate will be the street improvement situation? Will we have to put some off or?
Well, again, we may have to decide that, but if you may know, a lot of street projects are going on right now. So that's one of the projects that was never stopped under any of the restrictions related to COVID nineteen. But a lot of projects are already getting started. So. Be part of the decisions we might have to make in the coming months, but. But as of right now, the project that the council approved in capital in these last couple of years. The township is committed to having those projects built.
And I saw that especially on Ridge Road today. So I was really glad to see that, Mayor. So thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Krokowiac.
I got him. He's unmuted now.
Yeah, I try not to touch my keypad during.
No problem. I got you.
Mayor, I really appreciate you coming on and talking about what's going on in the town. And in particular, what's going on with virus, the virus-related impact on the town. I know there's a lot of people out in the town that are very interested in as much information as. The town can provide about what's going on. So I really appreciate it. And I just want to follow up with a few questions. One of the questions I get a lot is, is what's the reconciliation or what's the disparity between? What the, what the mayor is reporting, what the state is reporting overall, and what the state is reporting. For the long-term care facilities. Is there any succinct way to sort of explain to people why those numbers seem to differ?
Actually, Councilman, I don't know that numbers do differ. We get the numbers. They might be. There might be delays in when some are reporting. So for example, we have a conference call with the county and other mayors twice a week. And sometimes the numbers the county have and report for us don't match what we have. It's not that the numbers are wrong. It's just that maybe as they trickle down to different levels of government, they're just not catching up with each other. We get the numbers. We're not reporting these numbers from our own data. The data comes directly from the state. So when labs or hospitals are testing people and confirming the cases, they then report that directly to the state. Under the state health department, the state then turns around and sends that data back to the municipalities on a daily basis. So there might be delays in some of the getting, the information getting back to us or getting back to the county. But the numbers all emanate from the state originally. We're not getting data. Barnabas is not reporting to us. LabCorp or Quest or any other labs, they're not reporting to us. They're. Reporting to the state. The state then turns around and gets that data back to us. As you can see, there's significant delays. If you notice with some of the deaths that we're reporting, because there's such an overload in the system, very often medical examiners aren't. Getting to unfortunately deal with these deceased people as quickly as normal. So if you notice very often. When we're reporting deaths, sometimes the actual date of death was several weeks earlier. It simply took that long. For the medical examiner to confirm if a person was in fact a COVID-related death. So. We're not, the numbers should all be the same. It's all coming from the same source. It just might. Be different when you're seeing it simply because maybe they're not getting all the data at the same time. But. The numbers that we report every day are being generated by the state, not by the township.
Okay. Thank you. More specifically, there's of the eleven long-term care facilities, one of them has, has not reported any cases. Whereas the others have, you know, substantial numbers of cases and deaths related. Do you have? Any understanding of why that, what that one facility is doing differently than, than the others?
No, specifically, no. Other than for some reason, information is not getting reported, but I can't, I can't speak to that specifically, no.
And I also appreciate you talking about the infections for the town employees. As you probably know, at the last council meeting, the fire chief was saying they were having, you know, substantial numbers of people. Who had been sort of sidelined, both with the virus and also with just being. Having symptoms and also just having to isolate because they've been in contact. And one of the numbers that was thrown out, I think, was like twenty-seven at one point by the, by the fire department. But. I, I really appreciate you bringing the numbers down to the actual infections because it was a much smaller number. And I think it's a relief to a lot of people who may have heard that. At the last council meeting. You also, I guess, made a distinction in the fifteen senior facilities between the eleven long-term care and the other four. Do you have any feel for what's going on in those other? Non-long-term care facilities that you mentioned in, among the numbers you were reporting, how they're doing, whether they're.
They're doing much better than the long-term assisted living facilities. The actual residential communities in town. Are doing much better from a number perspective than the long-term and assisted living facilities are.
Yeah, but any, any thoughts as to why, what the, what the difference in the, whether there's anything that the managers of the facilities are doing?
You know, I don't want to, I don't want to generalize and I'm certainly no expert, but I think just the nature of the building. So. Just as an example, the rent a house and the deck and house are actually apartments. And because there, it's independent living, there's not necessarily people that need to. Come together like you are in an assisted living or a long-term care facility. So. With the rent a house and the deck and house, for example, you're told to stay in your apartment and it's easier for people to stay in an apartment. When you're not going to a dining hall together, when you don't have to go to a dining hall together, or when you don't, when you're not going to therapy or any other. Of the things that people in assisted living and long-term care facilities are doing. So just by that nature alone, that's a little bit easier. And I think also important to note is unfortunately, as we've seen in the numbers and it was reported to us from the very beginning. If there's underlying issues, you're, you're exponentially more susceptible to the virus. And the truth is, people. Who are in assisted living facilities or long-term care facilities are there unfortunately because they have several. Underlying issues to begin with. So they're more susceptible. Just by being there and because of why they're there to the virus itself. So again, I'm no expert. But based on what we're seeing, we think those are the reasons why the actual residential communities in town. Are seeing much different numbers than the assisted living or the long-term care facilities.
And it's certainly, it's certainly good news. I just wanted to follow up some, some of the data you've reported in recent days. That there have been twelve individuals, West Orange residents under the age of sixty. Who have had virus deaths, including a thirty-year-old and some people in their forties. I wanted to just ask you whether, whether there was anything that you know further about that, as well as there was some. I thought disturbing news recently that six children under the age of seventeen have, have tested positive for the virus. Is there, is there anything you can tell us that might, you know, perhaps allay some residents' fears or concerns? About what may be going on in those, these two age groups?
So look, fortunately. Though, and even in the news recently, younger, even children, young children have succumbed to the virus. We fortunately haven't seen that. So. Of the hundred and forty-four deaths in our community, only four of them are in the age group of thirty to fifty, the youngest being thirty. Twenty-five are in the fifty-one to seventy age group. In the seventy-one. And up age group, the number of deaths is a hundred and fifteen. So overwhelmingly, as we knew all along, it's the elder population that's most susceptible. And again, if there's underlying medical issues as well. And that's what our numbers are saying. I don't know. Off the top of my head, if there were comorbidities with those four who died in the thirty to fifty age group. I don't know that for sure. As far as the number of recent very young kids that have been impacted, I don't know the specific instances. But I'll, I'll say what I tell everyone when they ask the same question. It's nice out and some restrictions have been lifted. And we sometimes have to go to the shop, right? But if you want to be safe, stay home, stay home. So. It's, there's a sense, I think, overall, not just in West Orange, but all over. That this is over and it's time to go back to work. But the fact is, it's not. So. People need to continue to be cautious. And if you're going to go out, be very cautious about going out. So I don't know the specific reasons why. A handful of very young kids recently were impacted. I don't know the individual situations. I don't know their names. I don't know where they live. But I know the best way to avoid that for all of us is to continue to stay home.
Thank you. Just one more question. There, you've reported that there have been fifty-one deaths from private residences. Is there anything you can tell us about that? Were most of the people in the private residences who passed, did they also have comorbidities?
So I do not have a breakdown on the comorbidities of every death. I know in some cases that information was provided. So I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Matu Brown.
Hi. Thank you for all of that information, Mr. Mayor. I do follow all of your postings and keep. Updated with what's happening both here locally and on the state level as well as the national level. And I think that. Unfortunately, we're just no different than most of the other municipalities that. Have and share our similar demographics. And I can't, couldn't agree with you more. What, what the focus has to continue to be on is following the executive orders. They are still there. I'm happy to hear that we're not looking to open any tennis courts. I'm sorry. If, if residents are upset over that, but I think that it is. I personally think that we'd be in a violation of an executive order, looking at Superintendent Callahan's. Reminder on May ninth with respect to the reasons for us to be able to be outside our home or for medical reasons or shopping needs and. You know, outside of that, we should not even be gathering for birthday parade, drive-bys. I know that that's really disheartening, but. At the end of the day, it's intended to keep us all safe and contained. I do want to acknowledge and thank your efforts with respect to the working with the doctor, the local doctor to. Try and make sure that we have a, a testing facility. And I look forward to hopefully having one here in town, just so that, you know, we're just one of the many. In the areas that are trying to have the availability of additional testing so that we can start getting on the right track to, to opening up. I, I, it is. Daunting the thought of what the budget is going to look like, but I know that this is, we're not alone in this. It is incredibly frightening listening to, you know, what everyone else is going through. So I do appreciate all of the efforts that. And I'm sure Mr. Gross will talk about that later, but. Just all of the efforts in trying to make sure that we ascertain any available funds that are, are open. To us and available to us. But I don't have any questions of you. I just want to say thank you for everything that you're doing as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman McCartney.
Thank you. Mayor, mine is also a note of thanks. Thank you for thinking creatively, planning ahead, even though there's no definitive. End in sight. I appreciate the shout-out that you gave to DPW and the Health Department. Employees and really all the other departments. We know they're all in the office. You know, a few days a week working from home. Everyone has been accessible. We think of DPW, you know, I guess I think of DPW during power outages and storm-related crises that we consider. Now, this is just. So different and so much larger than any of us could really comprehend. And just everything that you're doing is just keeping the residents and the community, their health and safety at the forefront. And that is commendable. I want, I also appreciate the comment that you made about the rent a house to our colleague. Because we just had, I serve on the rent a house board and we had a conference call last night, our board meeting. And working closely with the Health Department and the OEM and the CER team. We continue to inform the residents. As you said, they do have an independent, they are independent. They have their own apartments, but. There are community spaces, the elevators, the mail slots. And there are notices being posted. We are asking the property manager to hand deliver notices so everyone is getting the information directly. And we see an amazing compliance, which is answering that question about keeping people safe. And understanding the need to, to be safe. Just thank you. Unfortunately, I want to say keep up the good work, but you know, I wish that wasn't the case and that it, that it, we just hope that it all ends up and soon.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And to add on to your remarks to the mayor. Debbie Salinardi over the Degnan House. Has been a very strong manager in that building, seen it firsthand, security right at the front door. If residents come out, when I drop food off there, you, you, you know, he's always monitoring, make sure the residents are spaced out. If they're, if they're coming in and out of the building. So it, it's good to see the management in those buildings and. Councilwoman Krokowiac, I'm not sure if this plays into anything, and maybe Mayor, when you're having your conversations with OEM. I know quite, unfortunately, from my own experience, having family members in some of the facilities in the township. There's a lot of hospice patients in, in those particular units and homes. So I'm not sure if that plays in, into it. There's many compromised people when you go in for hospice. The mayor, you know, it starts from the top. We appreciate your strength. We appreciate you keeping us safe, keeping us informed. We, you know, we have a lot of great projects. We started out the new year being really pumped up for two thousand twenty. We, we've just been steamrolling away with all the great redevelopment projects, with the move, reconfiguring the township with the library and. And all that comes with that, with the new affordable senior housing. Just so much excitement. So it, it will be a lot of tough decisions moving forward. Hopefully, we could, you know, keep planning and moving, moving forward, but it's. It's going to be tough when we do finally sit down and, and sit with all of you to discuss the budget. I also want to, we've, we've spoken this offline, but I just want to let folks know too, your support with senior services has been commendable. When we wanted to go move forward, going back to when Patty Duffy was here and we thank Patty because she's been instrumental. She's been retired, but. She's been giving a lot of input to help with senior services lately. But just, you know, moving forward and getting that grant and putting, you know, Dorothy together with Laura and Elia. Just, you know, I, I can't imagine where we'd be if we didn't have that support system in place for our seniors right now. So thank you for your vision with, with that project. And thank you for coming on this evening. I've been on for a while and all you do for us. So we appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you all. Stay safe.
Thank you. You too. And now, Madam Clerk. We, Mr. Sayers, you're on deck. We're going to, we need you to give us an update on redevelopment.
Just got to make sure you mute yourself there, sir. I got you, Jack.
How you doing, Mr. Sayers?
Okay, I don't have control of your mute for some reason. Can you just make sure? There you go.
Hello?
There you go.
How are you?
Good. How you doing?
Good.
Okay, the bottom line is, I had a discussion with Mr. Diaz this afternoon. And right now, he told me there's two hundred and one units that are leased out currently. The sale of the building is, that's, the building's not up for sale right now. It was up for sale a while ago, but it's, it's not up for sale now. And stage two, he has some things that he's doing within stage two that need to be changed. stage two that need to be changed. And they're putting that paperwork together, and then they're going to go before the board to make some minor changes in phase two, so they can get going with phase two. So that's basically where we're at.
Does he see any issues with, with the COVID in regards to moving forward with his stage two?
He didn't mention that to me at all, I'll be honest with you. I didn't talk to him about that, but he didn't mention that to me.
Okay, great. Any of my colleagues have any questions for Mr. Sayers? Councilman Guarino?
Of course. I have a question on development. Mrs. Sayers, any, any movement on the retail?
Um, I'll be, Councilman, I'll be honest with you. I didn't ask him that question today. I'm sorry. But as far as I know, like I said, they did purchase a liquor license, and I know they have a liquor license.
Okay. Are they promoting that? Are they telling people that they have a liquor license?
I think that they, they bought the liquor license for the, to, to put it together with the sale of the property. So whoever bought the property would have a liquor license. That, that's just my, I don't know that for a fact.
No, no, no. I understand.
That's my opinion.
Okay. But he, he never comes, like I said, so I would appreciate if you ask him next time.
I will. I, I promise you, I will. I'm sorry, I did not ask him that question today.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sayers.
You got it.
Thank you. Councilman Kocoviac?
President, just, just a small question. The 201 units that are leased, has that represented any recent leasing?
I'm not sure. All I asked him what, when I spoke to him today, I asked him the numbers, and he told me that there were 200, that there were a total of 201 units leased to that, as of today.
Thank you.
You got it.
Okay. Councilwoman Matu Brown?
None for me. Thank you.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Well, thank you. Thanks, Jack.
You're welcome.
And they, and I know they're still holding virtual tours too, which is always a great sign.
Yeah, they are. They're still doing the tours.
Great. Thank, thank you, Mr. Sayers, for that. I, I know, I have a quick question. Anything on Central Avenue redevelopment?
Richard, are you on? Rich?
I am, sir.
Yeah. Where are we at with Central Avenue? Do you know?
Yes. They obviously has, have a certificate of occupancy, and they're, I think, about 35 of the 100 units are currently occupied. There were additional move-ins that were planned for May. At this point, the, the effort has been on the 55 affordables, and those are being occupied. They're also starting virtual tours for the 45 market. And I know they're, they're interviewing or are in the midst of retaining a broker. But again, COVID definitely is having an impact. I spoke to Mr. Alford last week, and it's just, it's more difficult for people to move. Everything is more difficult, as we all know. So, so again, he's still anxious, you know, he's still very, very optimistic. It's just going to put back the timing to get the full 100 units rented up.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Trank. Okay, our council liaison announcements. Councilman Guarino?
Thank you, Council President. Right off, but thank you, thank you, Laura, for bringing that up. This is the map sequence for the grant we just got from Sustainable New Jersey and Complete Streets New Jersey, which is the walkability assistance and project that we're doing to improve the safety for not only the residents, but the students who go to Washington School and Edison Middle School. So we had a teleconference this week, I mean, last week, and I thank Mr. Sayers and Mr. Gross and Chief Abbott and Lieutenant Matullo, and the members of my pedestrian safety board, Mike Demme Miller, and the state of New Jersey for awarding us this assistance grant to enable our students and residents to walk safely through the Washington Street corridor. Hopefully, we will have a public demonstration and presentation in the near future. When that's available, we will let the public know to be able to come and voice your opinions and see the presentation. So I'm really excited about this. It's another one of our street improvements and safety improvements for our residents, particularly our students. This will be also incorporated into our road diet for Main Street and the mid-block crosswalk for Edison Middle School. So I'm really excited about this, and I think we should be. Going back on some of the other things that we've done in pedestrian safety, we've had to put off, of course, our bike rodeo. Over the last few years, we've had over 350 students come by and get bike helmets and instruction for safe biking. And so we had to put that off, and we'll have that sometime when it's allowed again. We're also planning another big townwide meeting to enhance our complete streets, get more assistance from Safe Streets, Easy Ride, New Jersey, to really impound upon our, our goal and our mission for complete streets. As a note, we're the only township in the county who's has seen reduced crashes on our roadways, both county and municipal, and the number of our fatalities are the lowest in the state. Even one is too many, but our numbers are going down, so we're really excited. And I thank the state, the county, and the members of my board, and particularly to the West Orange Police Department and the Traffic Safety Bureau, Officer Scott Smosh, and also want to big shout out to, you know, to the rest of the police department, Lieutenant Matullo, for all the things they've done, and retiring Police Officer Chris Jasek, who was there for us when we started. So we wish him well. Moving right along, it seems that residents, not only in West Orange, but throughout the joint meeting service area, are not following the announcement we made, where you got to stop flushing flushable things down your toilet. The system is, is getting an oversurge. People are home more, but they're just flushing them down the toilet. And I don't want to tell you what it's going to happen if the system backs up. If you think COVID-19 is bad, you don't want to see a sewage backup, and what kind of system that will cause. And I'm not trying to be funny. I'm just trying to say, this is what will cause a major, you know, health crisis. So I just wish everybody would take it seriously. Put your wipes in the garbage. Don't flush them down the toilet. Moving right along, and I thank people for that, with our Downtown Alliance, of course. The last meeting, I let you all know that our street fair has been canceled, and we're sorry to say that. We give a big shout out to Stacy and Rob Reese for what they do to keep the farmers' market going. We also have to thank David Drill and 80 Main Street for having the property accessible to the farmers' market. So we couldn't do it without these people. We hope you still are patronizing our local merchants, no matter if they're in the downtown corridor or not. It's good to support them. They're going to need all the help they can to survive this pandemic, and I see a lot of good people going around and using all our merchants. And it's, it's a good way to see that, and it's a good way to make our community what it is. So like I said, just going back with our walkability studies and complete streets and safe routes to school, we want to make our community as walkable as possible. And I'm open for any questions, anybody that has either offline or online about, you know, safe streets and downtown. And so that's all I have to say, Madam President. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilman Guarino. Councilman Kocoviac?
I just wanted to follow up. Also, I thought the Reese's are just, they're, they're amazing that they come up with this, with this alternative to keep the, the function going. I just wanted to follow up on that great slide that they have of all of the, all of the restaurants that are open, because I noticed that two of the bakeries, I, I'm sort of, I'm sort of partial to bakeries, but Willow and Olivia is not on there. They're open. In fact, I just got a delivery of, of their amazing chocolate chip cookies. And also, Pink Cupcakes just reopened. They closed up, we closed when we started the lockdown, and they've just reopened last week. And I don't know if, if they're watching, or maybe Councilman Guarino can just let them know. Maybe they, they could add those two, those two locations to the slide.
Sure. I'm texting Megan Bro right now, Councilman. Thank you.
I could have done that if I'd have just known. So thank you. Council President, you also, I thought-
Lauren, yeah, next slide, Lauren. There we go.
Okay, because I, I never have anything to talk about at Council Liaison, because my two organizations aren't meeting, at least so far, with the lockdown. So this is the, I appreciate you giving me two slides to talk about. So this is the infamous red slide, with the red box. Just make sure everybody knows it's cardboard newspaper and paper that is recycled this week. This is also something that you can find on the town website. If you can't find it with clicking through, you can just search for recycling. This is my second slide, and it just gives the schedule for May. And this slide is also on the town website.
Thank you, Councilman.
How'd it do, Council President?
You did great. Thank you. Councilwoman Matu Brown, I know the, the mayor touched on a few years ago, but that's okay.
He did. And I'm, I'm glad he did. I'm glad that this is on everyone's radar. And if it's not, please be sure to put it on your radar, you know, as the mayor said, and I echo his sentiments. This is a critical time wherein we all need to make sure that not only that we're counted, but every family member, all of our neighbors. So just, just reach out to, to, and, and let's start like a chain, you know, those chain emails we all hate to get, but maybe a chain text message, just to five of your friends, and ask them to reach out to five more people. We absolutely need to be counted. I will say, I'm really proud of West Orange, because the last town council meeting, we were at 60.9. Now we are 64. Oh, there it is. 64.7 yesterday, 64.9 today. So we're working, but we got to keep, keep at it. All of the resources that we need are critical, and, and, you know, the only way we're going to be able to access them is by making sure we're all counted. So please be sure to get counted. And like Councilman Kocoviac, my, my commissions are not meeting either. But the mayor also did touch upon the OS pack. Everything is on hold. So until there are executive orders that are lifted, you know, we, I won't have anything to report. I did want to take a moment, Council President, if I may, to give a huge shout out to the West Orange Police Department, the West Orange Fire Department, Chief Abbott, Chief Vecchio, for their care and concern in making sure that our healthcare workers are acknowledged. And the tribute parade that was held on Mother's Day, I got, we got noticed. Oh, there's my picture. They all came up. It was really exciting. So there, there were some residents that were invited, and I thank them for joining as well. But the, the, again, Chief Abbott and Chief Vecchio organized a tribute, just to say thank you to our healthcare workers, because while we have the, most of us have the benefit and the luxury of staying home and staying safe, you know, here we have our healthcare workers in these facilities who are making sure that our loved ones are, you know, being cared for. So just a huge shout out again to the West Orange Police Department and the Fire Department, and, and to our healthcare workers. Thank you for all that you're doing. Everything that you sacrifice is not, you know, gone unnoticed, and it just a great deal of gratitude. And lastly, I want to say to Ken Steele and the SER team, he and I were on the phone earlier today, and I heard some stories. And I just have to say, I, I am just so proud to be a West Orange resident, because everyone, you know, does come together in a time of need and has shown up, and, and just puts in the work wherever it needs to. So I'm, I'm really, really happy to be a resident here, and, and a huge thank you to everyone. That's it for me, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman McCartney?
All right, thank you. So what, we have Art for Earth. So just like Stacy and Rob are looking for ways to use an online presence to keep the community engaged, West Orange Arts Council and the West Orange Environmental Commission collaborated with World Wildlife a photo campaign. This was to celebrate Earth Day, the social distancing way, which I thought was very clever. We just put word out to submit nature photos to the Arts Council or the Environmental Commission. I've created videos of the pictures that have come in. They continue to come in, even though April 22nd is long gone. We do, as environmental commissioners, we do believe that Earth Day is every day. So we appreciate the nature pictures that are, continue to come in. And though this is during the crisis, and the weather really has been cold, you know, spring is out there, and it just looks so beautiful, no matter what street you're on in town. So we appreciate all of the nature pictures that are coming, and we'll continue to post them. You can visit the Arts Council or the Environmental Commission to see that work. And even with the Arts Council, the Arts Council has put together, this would have been the West Orange High School Advanced Placement Art Exhibit. And since that did not occur, we, the Carol Lemon Black and Chairwoman Patricia Metrano have put together a virtual exhibit. If you go to westorangearts.org, there's the information. You can see a virtual presentation of the students' work, view their exhibit, and also read all the statements as they speak about the art and what inspired them. This morning, the West Orange Chamber of Commerce, we have been meeting via Zoom. They will continue to, continue to provide educational outreach, again, using social media, having a presence. There are three upcoming sessions, the next three Thursdays in May. This Thursday, May 14th, Rakaya Tyler will talk about using Instagram and how that can help, utilizing Instagram and how that can help your social, as a business owner, your social presence. We have Robert Stern talking about maximizing Facebook presence, and Joberg Abraham, expert in the field on utilizing LinkedIn, and again, maximizing your online presence. So if you visit westorangechamber.com, you can register for any or all three of those seminars. I mentioned about the Rent a House before, keeping the residents informed. That's of utmost importance, and working with the Health Department and the SER team. Yeah, well, I am working with the SER team every day, delivering lunches and dinners, SER team, OEM and the Health Department, to homebound seniors and residents. So it is like a well-oiled machine, and that's how they operate, and it is a pleasure to work with them. And if you go to even on the Community Emergency Response Team Facebook page, too, one, the advice that they have on their Facebook page is to phone a friend and create a routine of doing that, to, to just make that outreach. We heard, Council President, you've been talking about Mental Health Month. The superintendent talked about it, particularly if it's a senior or someone that you know is alone, just to pick up the phone and, and say hello. So world of difference. Thank you. Oh, one more. We just, something came across about the New Jersey Council for Humanities Grant. It's a general operating support. We don't have enough information about it yet. We're trying to, we're going to, if anyone, I can send the information. There will be a webinar on Monday, so that we can review the criteria, to see if there is any programming in town that will fit the criteria for this New Jersey Council for Humanities Grant.
Great.
Working on that as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Welcome.
Okay, see my first slide. And speaking of well-oiled machines, the Holy Trinity Food Pantry, the efforts of the Holy Trinity Church, led by Cynthia Cumming and Chris Babinski, they've been doing a tremendous job feeding our residents twice a week with many packages of groceries. They've also been assisting the Senior Services Department. And for anyone who is in need, our Senior Service Department has been screening folks that call in. They either send them to the Holy Trinity Food Pantry, or they hook them up with the Umbrella Service, which I'll get to in a minute. But the Food Pantry will prepare the bags of primarily perishable food items, if available, you know, which most of the times there are. There's bread, eggs, cleaning supplies. If you need a face mask, please let them know. They will give you a face mask. And, you know, we, we go, Cynthia, they get it all packaged up, all the volunteers at the Food Pantry, and then we deliver it straight to our seniors' homes. The other residents will come on Tuesdays and Fridays. I know Friday, they're having another pickup between 10:00 and 12:00, and you just have to show up. they're having another pickup between 10:00 and 12:00, and you just have to show up and wait outside, and they will, they will help you out. They've been doing a tremendous job, and thank you to our West Orange Police Department for assisting. They're feeding hundreds and probably thousands of families by now. So we appreciate all their efforts of the church and all the volunteers that have donated to there. And let's see, my next slide. Okay, so the Mayor Sunshine Fund support also. Sue had just, Councilwoman McCartney had just mentioned the SER team, that they go pick up the meals every day. The phone number for there too is to call Senior Service Department at 325-4105. If you want a delivery straight from Harper's Cafe, their number is right there on top. I can't see it because our pictures are in the way, and also some good food. So we appreciate all the restaurants that are participating and working with our Senior Service Department. And next, and we're in need for volunteers. We have volunteers that work with the SER team, but we need volunteers to help with the Umbrella Organization. So the Umbrella Organization has, is a nonprofit that they've been working with our Senior Services Department, and they actually fill orders out where residents can pay to get orders filled out. And one of their volunteers, they go, they personally shop for you, and it's a great service. So if you have a compromising condition, if you can't get to the store, please, 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 you know, give them a call. However, they need more volunteers to do the shopping. The longer we're in this with this COVID-19, the more volunteers that we're looking for. So the word's getting out. A lot of residents are being served, but we also need some more residents who are interested in helping our community. And I just want to take a moment to announce it's also May, is also Older Americans Month. This Thursday, we were supposed to have our salute to seniors dinner affair that our seniors always enjoy every year. And unfortunately, again, another great event that the township provides, that's not going to happen. But we will have our Senior Services Department here at the next meeting to announce a few things that they're working on. So we appreciate all their efforts. This week, I had a Zoom meeting with them, and, you know, they're just, each and every time I meet with these ladies, they think of a new, a new way to serve our community. Now they're thinking of serving others around us by sharing their unique ideas. So this week, they started a COVID-19 Community Coalition for services with, for seniors, and our department led the way with this, where they reached out to other senior services in East Orange, Livingston, Montclair, Orange, South Orange, Maplewood, and the Metro West, JCC. So they're all collaborating together, a great collaborative effort to see, you know, who's doing what in each of the towns, each of the towns and surrounding areas, and how they could each assist each other's departments. So a great collaboration by our Senior Service Department, and we appreciate all their efforts for our residents. And anyone who may need a mask, I'm just going to hold this up real quick. I have, I had one of our seniors from the, one of our, I'm sorry, one of our high school students, really nice mask here that we're going to be giving out to our seniors. And I just want to give a shout out to one of our volunteers, Sophie Bennett, for all her hard work with making these masks for our seniors. So we're going to get them out to the community. Thank you, Sophie. Just a great way to spend your time while you're trapped at home, I should say. But again, you know, Mayor couldn't talk enough about the safety and some of my colleagues this evening. Please, when you go out, wear a face mask. If you are in need, please let us know. We have volunteers all throughout the community making them, but please, 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 wear your face mask when you're out in public. This way, we could flatten the curve. We are flattening the curve, but hopefully this, you know, this disease will be a distant memory someday, soon, we hope. And with that, Madam Clerk, I believe we are ready to go into our general meeting. Take it away.
Just make sure that you are unmuted there, Ms. Carnaval.
Hello.
There, oh, there we go.
Sorry about that. This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on October 31st, 2019, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 7th, 2019. Councilwoman Guarino? Councilwoman Guarino?
Present.
Are you not able to? No, no, he's not muted. Are you not able to hear him?
No, I can't, I can't hear.
Present.
Councilwoman Krokoviac?
He's muted.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Castellino?
Present.
I can barely hear.
Can you just want to check your volume? Maybe it went down? Do you want to test it again? Madam President, can you just give a sound check for Karen?
Karen, can you hear me?
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We're just going to have Ms. Carnaval put in her earbuds and see if that helps her out. Does those work a little better for you, Karen?
Yeah, I feel, yeah, now I can hear. Thank you.
No problem.
Sorry about that.
Hi. Okay, so we'll move on to our public comment portion of the evening. If there's any members in the public who are out there and would like to speak, please use the hand feature on the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a call, dial number nine, and our moderator will announce you. You will have five minutes to address the council, and the same rules apply as if we were in council chamber. Please state your name and your address, and please stick to the five minutes. Thank you.
Just a quick clarification. It's star nine for our person who has called in if they are looking to raise their hand. And I do have Mr. Steele, if you can follow the prompt on your screen. And can you hear us? Oh, I cannot hear you. Ken, are you able to hear me? Okay, you just, and then unmute yourself again. How's that? Can you speak again first? Okay, I cannot hear you. I'm going to ask if you can, I hate to do this, if you can leave the meeting and then come back into the meeting and make sure that when you connect to your audio, that you are connected to the audio on your computer and not a separate device. And if you can lower your hand if you've heard me with that. Okay, I'm gonna do, I will chat with him separately to try to fix that. And next, I have Mr. QB. Can you follow the prompts on your screen? Mr. QB, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Great. Yes, thank you.
Hey, Dave.
We have, we have weekly Zoom meetings at the library with the staff, so we're getting used to it. So first of all, I want to thank the township and for providing Millennium support. We submitted the Construction Bond Act grant last Friday, and we could not have done this without the great support of Millennium and their fantastic staff, Karen and Catherine. If you have not watched it, Mayor Parisi, we want to thank him. He did a fantastic job reading Mike Mulligan and his steam shovel. But on, that was put on Facebook today, so, but that is archived. So anybody who wants to get their kids or just get their kicks and watch the mayor reading a great kid's book. Our staff, our librarians are all doing a phenomenal job. Our youth services, we've been meeting, getting ready for summer reading. Of course, we're not going to be able to have the in-person events, but we're working on other things that we can do. We are reached out to the Recreation Department to do something called a walking book tour. So that would be something that could be socially distanced, but get outside to the great parks in West Orange and just read a book while you're walking along with your kids. And I will also want to reiterate how great it's been working with Dr. Casco, with the school system. We were able to work with them and the school media specialists who are phenomenal in the West Orange school system. They, you know, reached out to us and let us know that there was this product called Sora that works with our Overdrive that has, which is the vendor that we use for our eBooks and our e-audio books. And this gets it into the hands of all the school children in the West Orange schools, but also filters for age-appropriate. We have been on a service for, providing a service for seniors that have no internet, and we ask that this is somewhat of a honor system. But if you don't have the internet and you're a senior, if you can, you can call the library at 973-736-0198, and just select Reference, and leave a message, and a staff member will get back to you. And what we are doing is ordering new books and bringing them in, and we are personally delivering them to those seniors, but only for those without internet. We don't have the staff to go to every internet, every senior. And also, if you go to the West Orange Public Library website, www.wopl.org, you will, and go, select Calendar, we have programs going on almost every day that are virtual. So please check those out. If you would like to have any, if you have any questions for any of our staff, you can go to youth@westorangelibrary.org to sign up for the kids programs or ask questions about what's going on, ref@westorangelibrary.org. If you have questions about how to access all of our great digital stuff, reach out to them. Or do you have any other question? Just reach out to them. If you don't have a West Orange Public Library card, but you would like one, and you would like to have access to all of our great digital resources, reach out to CIRC, C-I-R-C, at westorangelibrary.org. And once again, I want to thank the Township Council and the mayor and the township. It's been great working with Senior Services. We should be getting in some puzzles that Senior Services reached out to us, and we're going to be getting those out to some of the seniors' facilities in town. So, and that is it. And I just want to thank you all very much for everything that you're doing, and I wish you the best, and I hope everyone stays safe.
Thank you, Mr. QB. You stay safe. And in the beginning, we were trying to get Mr. QB on the line. He is our Director of the West Orange Public Library, and thank you for all your efforts.
You're welcome. I'm sorry, I forgot to say who I was.
That's okay. That's okay. We're having trouble getting you on. Thank you.
I've been here. All right, have a great.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay, Mr. Steele, Ken, again, if you can follow the prompt on your screen. Hopefully, we got this worked out.
And your name and address.
Ken, are you there? Ken, can you hear me? We can't hear you. I'm sorry. The only thing, the only thing I can suggest this time is using a different device or calling in from your phone. And then you can also use that as well. I know there's a problem. Sorry about that. When you dial in, using the information, I can chat if you can, if you need the phone information, just use the lower your hand button, and I'll know that you're asking for that, and I can send you the phone information, and you can phone in. So while we're doing that, at this time, Mr. Fagan, if you can follow the prompts on your screen, please.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Great. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Madam, Madam President. I just want to give you a, an update on something that wasn't mentioned. And I'm talking about the Thomas Edison National Historical Park on Main Street. Of course, they've been a great partner with the West Orange community with many events. I spoke with Superintendent Tom Ross in an interview last week, and as you know, all national parks are closed. But they're formulating plans for reopening, although there's no concrete plans in place at the moment. But as soon as they are permitted, even in a limited capacity, they are anxious to do so. The West Orange site is going to face several challenges because most national parks have trails that need very little maintenance in terms of disinfecting. And as you're aware, the, the West Orange site is full of buildings, and they want to, they're going to have to be able to disinfect, figure out a way to keep all those buildings dis- disinfect, disinfected. Despite being closed, you can visit the Thomas, you can visit their website. I'm not going to give the website address because it's too confusing, but you can easily Google it. You can visit their website or their Facebook page. They have many activities on both of these medias, a lot of activities for young kids. So you can, even though you can't visit the site, you can still go to their website or Facebook page and participate in some capacity. And finally, Tom Ross does send his regards to everyone, and he looks forward to reopening soon. That's all. And if I neglected to mention my name, Joseph Fagan, Public Information Officer.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan. Before you, before you hop off, if you could just give a plug, we appreciate you've been entertaining the community with Facebook interviews that you have been doing. And what nights can, if you are on Facebook, what nights can the public view your interviews that you've been, you've been doing recently?
Well, thank you for bringing that up. I have guests on, but not every show. The shows run Monday, Wednesday, and Friday at 8:00 PM, and they're on the downtown West Orange Alliance Facebook page. And if you don't catch the, the live version at 8:00, you can certainly watch it in the reruns. I do have some special guests coming up. And as you heard Mayor Parisi say earlier, that Memorial Day ceremony is canceled, but I have some very special things planned for Memorial Day, including special guests. And I plan on airing footage of the Vietnam Wall Memorial and some interviews I did with Vietnam veterans at that time, July, I think it was two years ago. So I have some very special plans coming up for Memorial Day. So it will, it will not go unnoticed in West Orange, and thank you for allowing me to talk about it.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Fagan. Not only do you keep our community informed, but you also keep them entertained.
Thank you.
Madam President, I can promote Ken to a panelist to see if we can try to do it that way. Would you like me to do that?
Sure.
Okay, Ken, if you can just leave everything alone, your screen is going to change for a little moment. Don't worry about that. So we're just going to wait one second to see if we can move him into panelist. And let me see if I can get him this way. And, Ken, are you able to hear me?
I can hear you. Yes.
There we go.
There he is.
Okay.
Okay.
You're all set. You can go ahead.
Okay.
Council President, thank you for getting me on here. And what I'd like to do is thank Sue McCarthy for all the work she's done with CIRC. She's with us seven days a week, delivering rain, whatever. And I'd also obviously like to thank you, Michelle, for the work that you're doing with the food pantry. And I'd also like to speak to Joe for a second. Basically, all I hear is about people who have died or dying, and we know that that's happened. It would be better if you'd speak to the good things that are going on in West Orange. And one of the things that would probably make me really thrilled is if you would work with us at CIRC and help us deliver food. And you'll see how good things do happen in West Orange. And that's all I really have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Steele. And you could just let folks know you're with the CIRC team?
Yeah, I'm the Director of CIRC in West Orange.
Thank you very much. And we'll comment when everybody speaks from the audience.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Williams, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please. Okay, can you hear us, Tammy?
I can hear you fine. Good afternoon, good evening. This is Tammy Williams, Human Relations Chairwoman for the Township of West Orange, resident at Hillside Avenue. Just wanted to briefly thank the West Orange Police Department and all those engaged as first responders. Again, following in what has already been stated, one of the organizations where I am a mother member, Jack and Jill of America, participated on Sunday in the salute with the nursing homes and facilities in the community. And it was just a wonderful experience. So on behalf of Jack and Jill of America, the three tri-chapters in Essex County, I would like to thank the township, Sue McCartney, for just discussing an opportunity to do something to highlight our seniors and our first responders, as well as thanking Councilwoman Matute Brown for participating in the caravan. So again, just on behalf of Jack and Jill of America Incorporated, I'd like to thank our community for giving us an opportunity to say thank you for those who have mothered and continue to mother and did not have an opportunity to go out on, yes, on Sunday. Additionally, would like to bring to the attention that, given the cancellation of all municipal activities due to the COVID-19 crisis, there was a Haitian Day Parade or Flag Raising that was scheduled at Town Hall this week, next week. That has been, of course, canceled. But we did discuss as the HRC, the opportunity and the possibility of them doing some type of virtual flag raising for Haitian Day, which is going to be held on May 18th. We're still waiting on a flyer to confirm this. It is being hosted by the Township of East Orange. But they do plan to do a virtual flag raising on May 18th. That's Monday. More information is to come, and as soon as we have that information, we will share that and get it posted and make it available to the public. Thank you so very much for your time. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Tammy.
Okay, before we get to Mr. Pariisi, is there anyone else who is looking to speak? It's the Raise Your Hand feature on the bottom of your screen or star nine if you are joining us by phone. And as I see, no others. Ms. Pariisi, if you can follow the prompts on your screen. And are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, fantastic.
Great. So I'm going to go by your prompt. Whatever flyer you put up first is what I'm going to talk about.
Thank you.
There you go.
Okay, so on the screen, you're going to see some flyers in English and Spanish for the testing site in Week Wake Park. We are committed to continuing this through the end of May on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, except for Memorial Day, which is May 25th. An added feature with this site now is that it's open to all Essex County residents. In the past, it was open to just those who were experiencing symptoms of the virus. Now it's open to everyone, whether you're experiencing symptoms or not. And like I said, we're going to continue that through at least the end of May, and then we'll reassess at that point. One other thing, oh, let me introduce myself. Anthony Pariisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFatzenzo. One of the things that the county executive wanted to do was to ramp up the testing. So what we are currently planning is a mobile testing program where we will go to various locations around the county, making it easier for people to attend. And instead of doing the nasal swab that we've been doing at Week Wake Park, we're going to be doing the saliva test that was developed by Rutgers. So that will enable us to do even more tests per day. And even the, what I've been told, to get the results back, it's even quicker than the nasal swab test. So all that's currently in the planning stages, and I will definitely bring back more information as it becomes available. I will reach out to the council if we get that information before your next meeting. And can I have the next flyer? So on, at the end of April, the county executive partnered with the Community Food Bank to do a food drive. And we distributed two, over 2,000 boxes of food for families throughout Essex County. There is a great need, as everyone at this meeting and watching this meeting knows. So again, what the county executive committed to was, over the next 10 weeks, one day per week on a Thursday, we were going to visit various locations around the county. The logistics on some of those dates are still being worked out. But the first date, is it definite? It's this Thursday, May 14th. We're going to begin distributing the boxes at 10:00 a.m. This is going to be 1,000 boxes. It's on a first come, first served basis. We understand everyone is having a difficult time, so we're really not going to be, there's no eligibility requirements. It's open to everybody. And again, as those dates become, as those dates become available, we will make them known. And then just some other housekeeping items, if I could just share some information with you. On May 2nd, as you're all aware, the restrictions on county parks, the state parks was lifted. So our county park system is open for passive recreation only. Again, all of our active sites are still closed, such as playgrounds, basketball courts, tennis courts, bocce courts, dog parks, et cetera. All our buildings are still closed in the parks. And the one thing that the county executive is requesting, and we're making it a requirement, is that people who come to our parks and enjoy the fresh air, we still want them to wear a face covering. And that's just because in some cases, the paths are narrow. It makes social, practicing social distancing very difficult. So in order to not only keep yourself safe, but to keep everyone around you safe, we are, we do want everyone to wear face coverings when they visit our parks. And then finally, just a reminder that all events are pretty much canceled. So upcoming, we had our Computer Electronics Recycling Day, which was scheduled for the Saturday, which is canceled. And then on May 21st, we did have a job fair at Essex County College. That temporarily has been postponed, and we're actually looking into ways that we could do that, either remotely or digitally. So again, as I get more information, I will let you know. As in all cases, all this is on our website, which is www.essexcountyandj.org. And I hope everyone stays well.
Thank you, Anthony. Please stay safe. And thank you for the great information that you always bring to us.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, if we have any other audience members who would like to speak, push that button. Seeing none, we are done with the audience portion. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Madam Moderator. So Councilman Guarino, any response for the public?
Sure. Thank you, Council President. Thank you to all our speakers tonight. First off to, you know, Dave Cubey and to the library. You know, thank you for continuing making West Orange a township it is and all the services you give to our residents, and also looking out for our seniors, particularly with, you know, reading and availability to resources from the West Orange Public Library. So we thank you, and we wish you luck. And yes, thank you for about Millennium. They're very good. They're very successful, and I hope they're successful with your application, and I'm sure you will be. So thank you. And thank you to your board for always being there, and to the workers at the West Orange Public Library. We're very fortunate, longtime workers and very dedicated, so we thank you. Joe, you know, thank you for being you. I had a great interview with you a couple of weeks ago. It's really exciting. I'm glad people are realizing they're out there, getting to hear from all of us, things that are available. Also bringing up about the Thomas Edison Museum. And of course, it is going to be difficult for a lot of national parks to reopen, even ones with trails. But we're always there for the Edison site and for Tom Ross, who always is there for the township of West Orange, particularly the downtown corridor and for a lot of our pedestrian safety. So we send our best wishes to the Thomas Edison staff, Thomas Ross, and thank them for always being there for us. And, and Steele, I hope you're still out there. Thank you for CIRC and for you keeping it going, and all the people and all the volunteers. You know, Ken, even when you're sick yourself, you're always there. You always get up and you move around. You keep CIRC moving. And you never tell people about yourself, but you know what? I know you're a modest person, but thank you. Thank you for keeping it going, and you know, the township is very grateful. And I'm very grateful for you as your friendship and for what you do for the township. Tammy, thank you for keeping these things going and keeping us aware of what's available out there and the different events and for Sunday. And so, thank you, and keep up your good work. And Mr. Pariisi, Anthony, thank you for bringing always good sightings from the county executive and from the chosen freeholders. Also, I'd just like to hope that, you know, all the things you've done for us, particularly on pedestrian safety, particularly on Pleasant Valley Way, when eliminating certain parking spots, particularly in front of Burger King, which has been approved by the Board of Freeholders, and we thank you for that. That'll be another issue removed from Pleasant Valley Way. The traffic signal correction and improvement, Woodland Avenue and Pleasant Valley Way to make the crossing more accessible, more feasible, and pedestrian-friendly. So we do know, on behalf of my board and on behalf of my colleagues, big shout out to you, the county executive, the county engineer, and the Board of Chosen Freeholders. So we thank you, and thank you, Madam President. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Councilman Kukoviac?
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank everybody who spoke. And I do want to address Mr. Steele's comments. Mr. Steele, first, I think you should be embarrassed to address a council meeting during a council meeting by its first name, without showing any sign of respect. And second, I'm fine if you think that giving, trying to give residents information about the impact of the pandemic, which has largely brought much death, health tragedy, and financial ruin to just about everybody in our town. I'm fine if you don't, you're not interested in that. But I'm certain that it is part of my duties as a councilman to represent citizens, many of whom, I can assure you, do want to know what else is going on in their community, especially as it regards our senior citizens. You have no idea about what else I've been doing during the pandemic to help, help others less fortunate than me. And you have no idea what my health situation is. But I appreciate you coming and expressing yourself. But I think you should also know that the councilwoman's last name is McCarthy. It's McCartney, not McCarthy. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Matute Brown.
Thank you, Council President. And for the sake of time, considering it is a short agenda, and I'm sure everyone would like to get on with the rest of their evening, I just want to express my gratitude for all who are watching, all who participated in commenting. I appreciate you all. Thank you. That's it for me, Council President.
Thank you. And Councilwoman McCarthy.
So I just got a text from Tammy Williams that there is going to be, this is for the West Orange Suicide Prevention Advocacy Coalition. There will be a webinar on May 20th at 12:00. I will get this information out so we can post it for all. There are two guest speakers. One is the Training Director at Caring Contact, who did present at Roosevelt Middle School to parents there and students, the ABCs of Suicide Intervention. And the other speaker is the Clinical Training Director at Imagine, which deals with increased anxiety and depression during this crisis. So it's webinar details, I'm sorry, that's not on the slide for all to see. Thank you, Ken, for, I mentioned before about CIRC being a well-oiled machine, and it is with the help of Lauren Van Dyke and Caligra McCormick, who gets the schedules ready every day on where we have to go. So appreciate the, the work that's being done there. I was really pleased to hear from Dave Cubey. Dave was, Dave, you know, he had this goal of making a community center, and I believe he's doing that right now during this crisis. I have been sharing his West Orange Public Live, Public Library Live Facebook post with my students and with my six-year-old grandson. There was just one on science experiments and ivory soap bars, which are hard to find, but great science experiments. And the flyer that went out to the senior homes on the senior book delivery, I think that is a wonderful, wonderful opportunity to connect. Again, we've talked about engaging the community, and this is having books delivered directly to the two seniors in town. So I, I know I wanted the residents at Renna and in Woodland Valley and at the Jewish Federation to be sure that they all received that flyer. And Joe Fagan, thanks for all the information about the Thomas Edison National Historic Park, and look forward to the Memorial Day Facebook information. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and thank you for everyone for coming up to speak this evening. Dave, when you hired Brian, I apologize, his last name escapes me right now. He is just to focus on our senior community. He is a tremendous, tremendous asset with our senior services team. So they meet, actually, they'll be meeting tomorrow morning. Zoom meetings is our new thing in this world, but so much productivity is coming out of these meetings, and a great pick there. So kudos, and thanks for all keeping all our residents busy. Same with many of you, Ken Steele and our CIRC team. Tremendous job. We appreciate all the effort. And as Councilman Guarino touched base earlier, you had your own health issues this year, and we appreciate all your support in coordinating the teams to go out to serve. And Joe Fagan, I had mentioned you. And Anthony, just one last thing. I saw something today with the county executive collaborating with our Bergen County Executive and just bringing, you know, the testing is important, bringing it to our community. Hopefully, we'll get the information out, Joe Fagan will get the information out if we open up our own test site, as the mayor was stating earlier in the evening. So, so important to get these tests done and to get our community back and active. But again, we, we got to get the testing done. So thank you all for coming out this evening. And I will switch over now to Madam Clerk for consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting, April 28th, 2020?
Consent.
Consent.
Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Resolutions, Council President?
Yes, so we have a few resolutions this evening. And we have one, I'm going to just defer to Mr. Train- And we have one, I'm going to just defer to Mr. Trank real quick. We have one that we are adding. Did we get a number on that one? I know we had an email come through late, right before the meeting.
The number will be 118-20.
Okay.
So we need, I need a motion to add it to the agenda and then a second?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and I'm going to do a roll call vote. Councilman Grino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes, but I hope we are going to tell people what it's about.
Yes, we will.
We are.
Yes. Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if Madam Clerk, if we want Mr. Trank to weigh in, but...
Yes, I think that's best.
Yeah, we are narrowly don't do this, an agenda item this late that we couldn't even, you know, get it on the agenda itself, but it's important, has to deal with the COVID-19 CARES Act Fund and receiving some much-needed emergency stimulus funds. So Mr. Trank?
Is Mr. Gross also available? Because he would also be helpful.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
But I can start and then I'll hand it off to Mr. Gross because I got it literally when you got it.
Okay.
I just did the resolution. Obviously, it's clear that it's a reimbursement agreement with the county. It's obviously funds that are coming from the federal government as a result of the CARES Act that was adopted in March. And specifically, it's $2,260,405.84. And I think it obviously is subject to whatever requirements exist, but it's obviously welcome. So I'll defer to Mr. Gross, who can maybe get more color.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Trank. Mr. Gross?
Literally, just after four o'clock this afternoon, I got the best email I've gotten since the beginning of this event. And it was a notification from the county with this agreement attached. And what it is, is as part of the federal CARES Act, there is, $30 million is sent to Essex County, at which, as an entitlement, the township is eligible for the 2.26. If we have that kind of expense that qualifies under this. And there are things that qualify and there's things that don't qualify. Loss of revenue, for instance, is not one that's qualified. But this basically is to cover any of our expenses between March 1st and the end of the year that are COVID-related. It's welcome. Funds, there's going to be three or four tranches of payments. So we don't have to wait forever like oftentimes we do. So it's welcome. I wanted to get it right on so we could get our first payment in as quickly as possible.
Mr.?
Okay, thank, thank, thank you, Mr. Gross. Yes, Councilwoman Grino, you have a question on this resolution?
I do, I just wanted, I'm going to make a comment and Mr. Gross can correct me if I'm wrong. But Mr. Gross, the residents need to realize, this is an additional funding. This is not just money coming in. This is all going to be designated for COVID-related expenses, and you have to back all this up. So it's not just going to be 2.2 million in our revenues. It's going to be...
That's absolutely, this is just, to the extent that we have 2.26 million dollars' worth of additional expenses that we were anticipating, qualified, we'll get, we will be able to get those funds back.
Okay.
It remains to be seen what this ultimately will cost us. And certainly, one of the big, and we'll talk a little bit later, one of the big issues that we have facing us is not what it's going to cost us for what we may lose in revenue.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Gross, and thank you, Madam President.
Yeah, Mr. Gross, two things. One, if you could just tilt your screen down a little bit so we can see your face a little bit better. And two, check your audio. Your little, if you could put your volume up a little bit for us so we could hear you a little bit better.
Okay.
Hopefully, you won't disconnect yourself.
Yeah, the volume actually wouldn't matter, it would just be the raising the volume of your voice.
Okay, then maybe...
Volume on here.
Okay. With that resolution, we, I'm going to go, is that going to be Madam Clerk FG?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, with that, I was going to ask Mr. Gross just to give an explanation on D, a quick overview on D. And E, do my colleagues want anything polled? Or if they want any other questions answered, or if they need anything else polled? Councilwoman Grino?
Can you pass me for a second, Council President?
Sure. D and E, I asked for explanations. Okay, Councilman Kukoviac?
Thank you, Council President. I have a question about Resolution 113-20.
Okay, so B, okay.
I'm trying to figure out if the properties that are being proposed for sale are large enough to actually build upon.
Okay, so that would be B and C, because C is also one of those properties.
That's, that's, that's correct.
Okay.
The two lots individually, if I understand correctly, are 15,000 square feet. And I, I thought that that was going to be allowable for building on this. These are the properties, again, if I'm not mistaken, were previously in a town conservation area, and were just moved out of the conservation area. And I'm just trying to find out whether this can be built on.
So, so C, so C, we discussed last week, which there's already home on C. So the owner was just looking to remodel the existing property and go out further to the property edge. That's why they wanted to purchase that vacant lot. So they were going to build on it. They were just going to expand their existing home on the larger lot. And Mr. Trank, correct me if I was wrong on that, and also if you, if you have any insight on B. I believe that was a vacant property that was owned by someone for many years, and they're just looking to add on the smaller piece to the existing property.
Correct, Council President. And if you recall, you and I had a conference call with Mr. Greigle, the town planner, and we looked at some mapping. And again, the both B and C are being sold to the adjacent property owners. So they're, I believe, they're undersized lots, but when combined with the adjacent, like you said, with regard to 114-20 allows in addition, and I believe that you are right, with regard to 113-20, it is a vacant lot being sold to a person who owns a vacant lot, but they're immediately contiguous. And then they will have a ample property, subject to setbacks and all that, to build on that.
So, so both of these properties will basically increase the impervious surface on the, the two properties that are being proposed for sale today?
Yeah.
If they develop it.
Yes, yeah, I mean, they'll make it a combined lot, yes.
Okay. But thank you. And I also wanted to pull 115-20.
Okay, so you want it polled?
115-20 and also 117-20.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmen. Councilwoman Matute Brown?
No, I'm fine. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCartney?
No questions.
Okay, so, so let's start with just a question on 116, or not the question, if you could explain it to the public, Mr. Gross, taxes are now due for June 1st without penalty.
If you recall at the last meeting, we had a resolution on, for council consideration, to extend, to actually lower the interest rate on the, any delinquent taxes that might occur for the second, the second quarter payment. And that day, or the governor wrote, did an executive order, which basically preempted the township taking any action with the interest rate or extending the, the due date. And the governor extended the due date another 20 days from, from May 10th or 11th to... So now, on June 1st, all the taxes that were due on May 1st, if they're not paid by June 1st, there will be interest and penalties that will accrue after that date. If they're paid before June 1st, there will be no interest or penalty accrued. The, the township, based on the governor's executive order, cannot take any additional action to provide any further relief. So if there is going to be any additional, it'll have to come from the governor. And it's particularly important, I think, because as of today, it is clear that many property owners, many taxpayers are having difficulties because we are behind somewhere in the area. So, and that's significant.
And our taxpayers can make payments either online, they could drop a payment off, there's a Dropbox in the back of Township Hall, and, or still mail it in, you're still receiving the mail. Thank you.
We're not doing that, we're still, the only thing we're not doing that we did before is we're not paying in cash because we're not accepting payments directly.
Okay. Councilman Kukoviac, you have a question for Mr. Gross?
Yeah, I'm, I'm having trouble hearing him. I just wanted to make sure I understood what he just said. I heard him, I thought I heard him say that we're behind somewhere around 12 to 15 million dollars.
That's correct.
Yeah, and, and that's for May taxes so far, or?
Yeah, it's hard, it's hard to show, I don't have the delinquency because all the software is a pushback not to show the delinquency until June 1st. When you look at our cash flow from last year's, last few, several years, we're off about 12 to 15 million dollars.
Wow. Hopefully, things will improve between now and the end of the month. But I guess that's what Mayor Prezy was, was referring to when he was talking about cash flow problems?
Correct.
Because that's, that's pretty significant. I'm not telling you anything, but...
Very.
Are we able to pay our bills at this point?
Yeah, our issue won't be now. As I think I mentioned at the last week, if we're going to have issues, they present themselves substantively until the end of this quarter, before the next same period. So I would expect things at this point, if things continue the way they are, we're going to, we're going to have issues comes on.
Okay, so we're able to pay bills now, but we may have some issues around the next tax deadline.
Yeah.
Okay.
And just, just as a follow-up on that, at the last council meeting, we did approve an issuance of about, I don't know, 6, 6 million in change? Did I, do I remember that correctly? From a consolidation of multiple...
That we've already taken on. I was moving it from, from a short-term debt to a longer debt.
Right, so is that going to benefit, benefit us cash-wise?
It'll have no impact on us, you know, depending on what the...
But you're going to just swap out the, the short term for the long term, but there's no...
Exactly, yeah, it won't have any...
Okay.
Thank you. So, Mr. Gross, we can, and we can continue some other financial discussion impending matters. I just want to get through the agenda first. So, Madam Clerk, if we could, oh, I'm sorry, my other colleagues, anyone else have a question? Okay, Madam Clerk, if you could roll call for consent agenda?
Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Every, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Councilman Kukoviac pulled 115-20, Resolution authorizing an award of contract for emergency transport third-party billing to Revenue Guard.
Okay, and I had some questions on that too. So, Councilman, if you have a quick question or you want Mr. Gross to explain, because I was going to ask him to explain the third-party billing?
That's fine, whatever you want to do. I just wanted to pull this because I don't feel like I have enough information to decide, so I was just going to abstain. But that's all.
Okay. Mr. Gross could just explain to the public the third-party billing for us for the emergency transport Revenue Guard?
Yes. We perform ambulance services for which we bill insurance companies. We do not bill our...
Excuse me, I apologize. If you could just get closer to your computer or your mic, where it's a little, your volume's a little down.
Before you continue, John, I'm sorry, can you just check that nothing's covering your, like the keyboard or top of the keyboard or anything like that? Because it may, it just sounds like it's a little muffled? No?
Is that any better? I can't imagine the surface. It's, everything's right there.
Okay.
Okay, um, as, as most people know, the township performs ambulance services for those that need to go to hospital and other places. And we charge our residents to insurance companies. We do not bill our residents for any co-pays or any additional funds that the insurance company does accompany. We have a service that does the billing for us and sends us any payments that are received, for which we then receive and use it as revenue in our budget. It's somewhere in the area of varies over the year. They were from 1.2 million to 1.4 million. This company has done a terrific job for us, and we're very, very, very pleased with them. This, we went out for bid for this, this, this project three years ago. As part of that bid, I'm sorry, that bid, there was a three-year contract with a potentially, potential two-year extension. We've been, we're asking United to approve the two-year extension that was part of the bid that was done three years ago.
Thank you. Okay, Councilman, did you have any questions or you're good there?
No, I had just asked for some, for some data and couldn't, couldn't get to it, so.
Okay.
Or I guess, I guess the town couldn't, I guess the, Mr. Gross couldn't get to it, so.
Okay. No problem. Councilwoman McCartney, you have a question on this?
She did. So, John, this isn't new. This is an extension. Can you just, do you have anything in front of you on what that additional revenue is that comes in with this third party?
Our portion of, so I'm going to make up numbers. We'll say if we take somebody to hospital and it's an $800 bill.
No, 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 I understand the system. I just meant how much. I mean, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars that come in, if I recall, from previous years.
Oh, between 1.2 and 1.4 million.
Okay. Right, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call?
Is there a motion to approve 115-20?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Grino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Restaining.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. 117-20, Resolution authorizing change order number one and final for the project 2010 Road Improvement Phase III with regio construction in the amount of $43,911.28. Councilman Kukoviac pulled this?
Yeah, again, I just wanted to pull it to vote against it. I, I don't believe that we should be authorizing payments after the work is done because then we're obligated to it, and this work is already done.
Councilman, I just, I just want to remind you that this is an as-built change order. By definition, it has to be after the work because basically, when you close out a project, you get the final bill with the final quantities of things that you use. And sometimes there's more, sometimes there's less, and by definition, but the nature of this particular type of change order, it is after the fact. It has to be, because you're, you're closing out the project, there'll be no more adjustments. So this is the last time you put the project to bed, and that's it. In this particular case, there was some additional per-unit things that, you know, that we had per-unit charged... In this particular case, there was some additional per-unit things that, you know, that we had per-unit charges that were in the bid, and the quantities that they used in a particular section of town had to be more, because once they got into the job, the physical nature of it was that it required additional materials and stuff. That, that's what this is. I appreciate your position on this, and I understand it completely. I just want to remind you that this one is a different animal than what we usually have heard about which is a change order where the job is continuing, continuing on, but, but the, the work has already been done. That's not the case.
I just want to add, Mr. Gross, to your explanation, Mr. Lepore giving us a detailed description, and there was additional drainage facilities on Stockman Street and Tompkins Street at Freeman Street. So that was part of the, the additional improvements that were made with this.
But again, these are as-built. And like I said, it's like, the very last thing you do is you, you stand up and say, okay, what, you know.
Thanks.
Oh, yes, thank you. I, I do understand what, what as-built means. I don't recall that that was part of either the resolution or the letter. But, but regardless, regardless of how much it costs, my understanding from, from Mr., Mr. Lepore's letter is that this was additional work, not anticipated at the, the original letting of the contract. So it's additional spending, even though with the prices that we, we spent were predetermined as part of the original contract, there were still expenditures that were done. Again, you know, you know what I'm talking about, because I, I've made this issue, you know, since you've been here, since before you've been here. And I understand the argument, I understand the argument, and I don't want to, I don't want to belabor it. I don't want to belabor it. I, I'm not trying to belabor it, I just wanted to, yes, I was asked why I'm voting against it, that's why.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call?
Is there a motion to approve 117-20?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
No.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Casselino?
Yes.
There are no ordinances on second and final reading this evening, and no ordinances on first reading. Pending matters, new matters, council discussion.
Okay, so, Mr. Gross, I have a quick question for you, and I'll see if my colleagues have anything else. Obviously, we're not in a position to discuss budget right now, and, and so we have more information. I know some roadwork projects, as the mayor stated earlier, are still being completed. Where are we at with the improvements on our firehouses with our current situation? Are we able to continue those improvements? Has that stopped? I know we're dealing with roofing, so we're, any idea where we're at, or you want to get back to us?
We've not stopped any of our projects. That have been funded. And, and we, as far as the, the additional improvements on the firehouse, as you recall, you let out a, a contract to a firm to do the plans and specs for multiple improvements, and we're waiting for that to come in and get completed. We'll, we'll speak to you about awarding moving forward. Having said that, I would think that anything we're going to be moving forward will be, will be viewed through the, the, the tint of the lens of being where we are now. So we're, we're moving forward with everything that, that's been authorized to move forward with, and we'll come back to you when those processes are completed, with, with the next steps for you to consider.
So I guess my question is right now is, so obviously, last year, for, and for those in the public who are watching this, last year, we had approved a large capital budget for the intent and purposes of strategic budgeting for, for this year. And we still haven't approved all of those projects that were part of that capital funding. So I guess my question to you is, some of the projects that may have been slated and not started obviously may not happen, because we may have to draw from, from that pool of money to get us through this year? Is that what you're anticipating?
No, you can't use capital funds to.
Okay.
That's not what I'm anticipating, but for instance, we did, we're doing plans for the firehouse based on funds that you appropriated for last year, plus additional, we're doing work for the next tranche of work to be done. So you will have to make a decision whether you're going to add more money to that, what we have now, once the plans are back. That'll be a decision that will be made at that point in time.
Okay, Councilman Guarino, I see you raising your hand.
Okay, thank, thank you, Council President. Mr. Gross, just in the consideration of the situation that we're coming into, have you or any other members of the administration sat down and began to put together a risk analysis for the, the continued operation of the township? And, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Every day.
Every day.
I'm sure it changes every day.
But, so Mr. Gross.
I was, I was trying with saying every hour, but I thought that was too.
Okay. So I know, I know that was, and that's, I'm not trying to be a short, a, a, a smart question, but I'm just concerned, because you know, it, it's going to be really important that, you know, we know where we're going, what we're going to have to do, and what, decisions, hard decisions are going to be made, and the sooner that we know, or at least we get a blueprint of if-then's, I think it'd be very beneficial, I mean, to the council and also to the municipality, I mean, the residents, if we can get a good idea of what the if-then's are going to be.
I, I honestly, from the beginning, have felt that our problems, that we weren't going to have an appropriation problem. The nature of this type of an emergency is, is not, a lot similar to previous emergencies, where we've had a lot of labor cost. We, we do have some labor costs, but, you know, given the size and nature and the length of this, it's comparatively nothing compared to the kind of labor cost you have with a big snowstorm. Having said that, I've always felt and believed, and unfortunately, I've been right, that our problem is, is going to be on the revenue side.
Yeah.
You know, it's going on what? How that.
Council, you done, Councilman?
I'm done, thank you, Council President.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes, thank you. Just, just very briefly, I, I know we talked about this a little bit at the last council meeting, and you had expressed you thought that, that it was going to be, any big problem is going to be in the third quarter. It's, it sounds like to me you should have a better idea of how the second, the February taxes, I'm sorry, the May taxes are going by our next council meeting. Would you have a better idea of what the hole might be at that point?
Well, right now, it's 12 to 15 million.
Right, and I'm just looking at that's.
And that, that, that was, that's what we're going to be short through the beginning of the third quarter. Now, what you're talking about is payments for the third quarter. That, you know, potentially is, would, would mimic what's going on now, because if you can't, if you can't afford to pay your second quarter, you're not going to pay your third quarter either. So whatever shortage we have at that point in time is going to at least mimic that, if probably more. So we're, we're going to, we're watching our cash flow every day, and we're, we're looking at in anticipation now. We now know that people, as of June 1st, will start racking up interest and penalties for not paying. And so I think, you know, over the next two weeks, we're going to see what this, this number really is. Is, you know, because what we don't know is, is this strategic weighting? You know, is this, is this, you know, people and businesses, and because it's, it's across the board, it's not, you know, it, 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 there's no one sector that's causing this. But it could be strategic weighting, you know, they know there's no penalty, they're holding on to their cash because of the uncertainty. But they'll end up, maybe, you know, a good portion of them will end up paying. We just won't, we won't know that until June 2nd.
Right, and that was the, that was sort of where I was coming from. At the last council meeting, I thought this, this potential crisis wouldn't be hitting until the next, the next tax quarter. What you're, what seems to be at least the potential to be an equal problem just in the next few weeks. What I was trying to, the point I was trying to make was, we should know a couple of weeks from now, by the time of the next council meeting, whether we're still going to have a 12 to 15 million dollar hole, because, I'm, again, I'm not telling you anything, but that's 15 to 20, roughly 15 to 20% of our total annual budget. So that, to me, is suggesting that there's a potential for a crisis now, and I'd like to discuss this in more detail at the next council meeting in terms of, first, what the collections have been, and then maybe go down to, I understand when you say this, a revenue problem, and I totally agree with you on it, but the, the problem is, we can't, we can't generate 12 to 15 million dollars in revenue just to fix this hole. We're, we're going to have to look seriously at, at cutting costs. And I'm thinking, maybe at the next council meeting is the time to start talking about, you know, what steps the, the administration has done so far, and what the impact of that has been, and then take a, a look at what else we can do going forward in the short term, if we, if we have to. Hopefully, we don't have to, but if we have to, we're going to have to move pretty quickly, because, you know, obviously, the, the, the calendar year is almost half-done, and so we've already spent, you know, somewhere close to, or coming up on in another three weeks, we'll have spent, you know, close to half of the, the, the budget so far, so.
Okay, Councilman.
Councilman, if I, if I could just address that.
Please.
I'm not sure what I may have said, or how I may have said it, to lead you to believe that I in any way didn't think that this was a crisis. This is a crisis right now, and I'm dealing with this on an everyday basis. And we're, I'm already into doing a layoff analysis, you know, everything that, what will it take for us to continue this? This is on, you're right, this can't wait another, another two weeks or another month to, to be, to be worked on. We're working on this right now, we're looking at it in anticipation of where we're going. And when I said, when I was talking third quarter, this being an issue in, in the third quarter, I was talking about third quarter of the year in July, because that's when our cash flow problems are going to start. They, they may, they may get worse come August, although they, they won't. They'll, they'll, we'll get a reprieve in August, because again, the banks will be paying 75% of, of our taxes. But again, that shortage is going to follow, if there's a shortage, then it's going to follow through, and it's going to make it even worse come the end of the third quarter. So we're, we're, we're in a crisis situation now. I don't think anybody questions that or doubts that. And I just want to assure you that we're looking at all the different possibilities to figure out how to continue to, to provide services, the township president, and of course, that, 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 that we can find it, and how we might find it.
That, and that's, that's, that's great, thank you very much, I'm, I'm reassured by that. The, the issue for us, at least, I, I assume I'm talking to the rest, for the rest of the council people, is we have very little idea of what actually you've done, and what you're looking at, and what you're thinking is. And I'm suggesting that maybe at the next council meeting, we have a agenda item so that we can get a better idea of what, what you're seeing and what you're thinking and what you're doing.
All right, all right. Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Matute Brown has had her hand up.
Thank you, Council President. And just to my colleagues and to the residents who are listening and will be listening at some point to this council meeting, while not an immediate remedy, there are things that we should be doing, just the way that we receive calls and emails from our constituents advocating for items and issues that are important to them. I, I'm going to ask that we all, including my council colleagues and our residents, contact our senators and our assembly people, representatives, and ask them to support what is Assembly Bill, Proposed Bill 3971, and its partner in the Senate 2475, which are relief bills that are proposed to provide relief for revenue loss within municipalities. It's not an end-all-be-all, it's not a save, saving grace. However, it is, in, in Mr. Gross's words, we did have a conversation about this earlier, it is another tool in our toolbox, right, that, that we need to explore, and we need to do whatever we can, pull all of our resources, and sometimes those resources are advocacy, right? And in, in addition to that, I know that our, our Congresswoman Mikey Sherrill has also been pushing the House Bill 6467, which is the Coronavirus Community Relief Act, which also helps provide federal funding to municipalities to help cover some of those revenue loss. Because we're all in this together, all the municipalities are going to be in the same, they are, not going to be. They are in the same position that we're all in. So I think that in addition to, you know, working together with the administration and trying to find our way, how to best remedy this, we also have to do our part as constituents to our elected officials in DC and in Trenton to make sure that they understand the need to incur support and vote for the passing of these bills. I'll just name those bills again so that you can look at them, and I'll share them on my page as well. Assembly Bill 3971 and Senate Bill 2475, which is the Permissive COVID-19 Relief Bills that'll help municipalities. I, I think we all need to do whatever we can, and I know we are doing whatever we can, but it, it, it's at least a tool in the toolbox.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, Miss, Councilwoman McCartney, you didn't speak yet, I don't know if you had anything to add to the conversation?
Councilwoman, you are muted.
Said, just have been listening, no comment at this time.
I think. So, Mr. Gross, I know you, you'll be keeping us informed. You know, Councilman Kukoviac, I, I've called him numerous times, so if you ever are wondering in between meetings what's going on, you could always, you know, touch, touch base with Mr. Gross. I know, you know, this has been stressful, and you're not in a easy position, Mr. Gross, trying to juggle all these balls and trying to figure out this situation. But we appreciate all the hours you've been putting in, and hopefully, you know, we'll, we'll get through this. As Councilwoman had mentioned, you know, these are a few tools in our toolbox, so now we're going to do what we need to do to try to make our budget whole and, and move forward. So we look forward to a conversation, whatever information you could give us next week. I assume we would probably discuss impending matters, would probably be the appropriate part of the agenda for, for that, unless it's resolution-related. With that, I am going to ask Madam Clerk to move us out of a public meeting into ABC hearing.
I think maybe Councilmember Kukoviac is trying to get your attention, Madam President?
Oh, sorry, I don't see on the screen anymore. Councilman?
Thank you, just very briefly, I, I really do think it's imperative for the council to have as full a briefing as we can as a council. I, I understand what you're saying, I should call Mr. Gross whenever I have questions, but I think this issue is something that the council needs to be informed about as a group, and also to discuss as a group. So I really do think it's, we should put it on the agenda for the next meeting, at the next council meeting, to see where we stand with the May property tax collections, and then get a briefing from Mr. Gross and maybe others about what the overall situation looks like and what we're thinking about doing going forward.
Okay, so again, I did not say we weren't going to have a discussion. I had it right now, pending matters, and I'm going to leave that up to the administration to see what information they have by that time. And we will definitely have a discussion, and we'll decide where it'll be placed on the agenda, depending on the information they have to give us at that time, but we will have a discussion, okay?
Great.
Madam Clerk?
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting and enter into ABC?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Okay, the motion is carried. That's the end of our agenda.
Okay, we will move to German. Before I do that, I would like to make note that our next virtual meeting is Tuesday, May 26 at 6:30 PM. Instructions will be posted on the website the prior Friday to the meeting. And we hope you look forward to a, a nice Memorial Day weekend that weekend. Please, West Orange, we hope you are to stay safe. Please stay informed. And please, when you go out and about the township and in public, remember to wear your face mask. I thank you to all my colleagues this evening and our administration for being patient. Feedback I'm getting on these meetings, the public has been appreciating all the information we're able to deliver to them. We will continue to do so, and we look forward to speaking with you on the 26th. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a sec? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Good night, West Orange. Stay safe.
You too.
Good night, everybody.
Be safe, everybody.
Thank you. This is just a reminder that the meeting will end for everybody, including the panelists and attendees, and have a great night, everybody.
Thanks. Bye, Lauren.
Thank you.
Great job, Lauren.